Welcome to the Tuesday, April 16th Select Board meeting. We are meeting on Tuesday this week because of the Monday holiday. And it would be impossible to proceed with this meeting without acknowledging the terrible tragedy that happened yesterday in Boston. So I think it's probably most appropriate to take a moment of silence for those who died and were injured and were otherwise impacted by this horrible event in our capital city. Thank you very much. Because of the scale of this tragedy, what it really means to the Commonwealth, to the United States and beyond, it seemed appropriate to mark this. And Mr. Wald's suggestion, I've written a letter on behalf of the Select Board that I hope will be willing to sign tonight. And this is from the Select Board on behalf of the community. So if you don't mind, I'll just take a moment to read it. It's addressed to Mayor Thomas Menino. It says, "Dear Mayor Menino, the Amherst Select Board wishes to convey our community's deepest sympathies for this horrific tragedy. Amherst shares your shock and grief for the outrage committed on one of Boston's most magical days at one of its most beloved events. Despite all the sadness and fear, your city has inspired us. The selflessness and true heroism of first responders, marathon staff and volunteers, hospital personnel, and countless regular folks makes us all proud. The reports of great kindness, like people opening their homes to runners and their families, help heal our broken hearts. We hope city residents find comfort in the support of Boston's extended family spread across the Commonwealth, the United States, and the world. Through your magnificent colleges and universities, hospitals, museums, sports teams and athletic events, historic and cultural attractions, and more, the web of people with enduring ties to the city is vast, and all of us stand with you now. Wishing you continued strength and courage as you lead Boston through this trying time. Sincerely, the Amherst Select Board." Thank you very much for doing that. Thank you. Okay, so we will make sure all to sign that before we leave today. Could we stick that in that folder?
If there's one in there. Is that the second one?
I'm not sure if they're all on letterhead or not. Okay, so we will start with some untimed items. We don't have anyone here for public comment tonight. So we might as well start at the top. The top item is setting the fee for liquor licenses at agricultural events. We had a, I'm sorry, Mr. Elsasser, would you like to make some public comment this evening?
Yeah, I have a reminder, but I don't know if you can see what I'm saying.
Certainly. Please come forward and introduce yourself for folks at home.
My name is Bill Elsasser at the Anne Whelan. Last year, I was at the, moving toward the Survival Center from the main corner of North Amherst. And there was a pall of smoke such as I had rarely seen in my life, an acrid scent. And the entire area was impacted in ambiance to such a degree that I almost literally fell off my feet. And there were two large yellow vehicles with the insignia Gallagher on them, and they were, there were flames pouring out from underneath the vehicles. It was like some mephitic vision. And someone informed me, a flag lady, that this was saving the town of Amherst 80 percent in terms of budgetary wherewithal for resurfacing the roads. What it was doing is literally impacting the entire environment of the earth. Do I know any more than that? I do not.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your feedback. Okay. Thank you for coming in tonight. Okay, so the untimed items, setting fee for liquor license at agricultural event. We do not have an application before us at this time, but we expect to receive one. We have once before given a license to a meadery, in fact, a winery that makes mead, to sell at a farmer's market. And at that time, we charged those folks $50 for that license. And I don't know exactly how that was determined. But since then, there has been a state law regarding such things. And that state law now requires that the Select Board set a fee for the liquor license, and in fact, it caps that at $50. So before we get an application, which is anticipated, the office would like us to make sure that we have set the fee, so we have a formal motion here to take care of having set that, and that will then be on our fee schedule going forward. Anyone have any questions or comments about that issue? Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, if I was sure where the motion was, I would be happy to read it. Here we go. Special license fee for sale of wine? That's the one. I move that the Select Board vote to set the fee for a special license for sale of wine produced by a licensed farmer-dash-winery for off-premises, for off-premise consumption at indoor or outdoor agricultural events, should be an S, at $50 for each license granted.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Mr. Hayden, I'll mention that when you were absent last week, we just, we barely could proceed without having your seconds. And then it-
Making motions, and it would just be dead silent.
Then it was really terrible, because we were afraid we couldn't adjourn without you, so-
We almost didn't.
That's right. We almost didn't, yeah. Okay, next up on untimed items, seasonal liquor license renewal. We have only one seasonal liquor license these days, and it is for Cherry Hill Golf Course. Ms. Stein.
I move that the Select Board renew the seasonal wine and malt liquor license for Cherry Hill Golf Course, 323 Montague Road. Manager Barbara Biltz for operations from April 1st, 2013 through January 15, 2014.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Ms. Brewer?
I am so sorry, but could the minutes please reference in the previous item, the MGL section that that new license is under?
Sure.
Just so we'll be able to find it again someday.
Very good. Okay.
They so hopefully provided it to us.
We've got a couple more minutes, so we might as well do the parking and street closure requests. Ms. Stein.
I move that the Select Board approve the reservation of metered parking spaces on the east and west side of Boltwood Avenue between Spring Street and College Street on May 8th, 9th, 13th, and 14th, 2013, for events at the Lord Jeffrey Inn.
Further discussion? Indeed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Let's see, we've got minutes. Are folks ready to approve the minutes from March 4th, 18th, and April 8th?
I am. They were very clean. There are a few very minor changes, and they're editorial rather than substantive.
Very well. Does anyone have a problem with approving the minutes today? All right, Ms. Stein.
I move that the Select Board approve the minutes of March 4th, 2013, March 18th, 2013, and April 8th, 2013, as amended.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you please put me down as an abstention?
Oh, certainly.
Because I really do read them. No clip.
Four in favor, one abstention.
They are lovely. They really are lovely.
All right, so we are, I believe, fully caught up on minutes, which is wonderful. Thanks again to Ms. Rosell in the office for keeping us current with that. I think our last untimed item that we could do is a committee appointment.
Okey-dokey. I move that the Select Board approve Nancy Pagano to the Kana Kusaki Sister City Committee, two words missing, for a term expiring June 30th, 2016.
Further discussion? Mr. Musanti, would you like to comment on a staff member being appointed as a voting member?
Sure. This is really to address a, there's a couple of vacancies on that committee, and like the AgCom, I believe, they were having difficulty achieving quorum. And Nancy's been a long-serving, very hard-working staff support. And so as a practical matter, I was comfortable with the notion of her being appointed so they could actually execute committee business, as opposed to just talk about it endlessly.
Thank you very much. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's four in favor, one absent. Okay, Ms. Brewer has stepped out of the room for a moment, in case anyone is wondering why suddenly we have an absence. Okay, let's see.
So did she vote, or?
No, so we'll just put that down as four.
Abstention?
Four in favor, one.
Okay.
It's technically absent rather than an abstention. Okay, so it is 6:44. I believe we're out of untimed items, is that right?
I think so.
Am I missing anything? Okay, then we will say that, as we like to say here, 6:44 is the same as 6:45. And is everything okay? Okay. So 6:44 is the same as 6:45. Our 6:45 item is our post-election reorganization vote. This is something that the Select Board does after every annual town election, every election other election that has a Select Board member's seat up for election, or any time Select Board member, or any time there, an officer on the Select Board voluntarily resigns. So since we had the annual town election last week, and Mr. Wald and Ms. Brewer were re-elected without opposition, thank you for your continued service, it is time for us to have another reorganization vote. So as we do this every year, I will hand this over to Mr. Musanti for our election.
Thank you. And so it's pretty straightforward. I'll ask for nominations, and then we'll have a motion. So are there any nominations for Chair? Ms. Stein?
I move that we elect Stephanie O'Keefe as Chair again, because she does a much more stellar job than any of the other of us could do.
You got that right.
Okay, that nomination has been made and seconded. Are there any other nominations for Chair? Okay, hearing none. So we'll come to a vote. All those in favor of Stephanie O'Keefe for Chair of the Select Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I held my breath for fear that she would vote no.
So the motion carries. Congratulations.
It would be against her.
Again.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate very much the Select Board's continued faith and trust in me in this role, so thank you. Okay, so then we now have nominations for Clerk. Ms. Stein.
I nominate Aaron Hayden as Clerk, because I hate to see things change.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is, abstentions, opposition? No, I'm sorry. Okay. Did you decide to vote or abstain? I abstained online. Yeah. Okay. And so then we also have the question of Vice Clerk, Vice Chair, rather, which is something that for many years, the Select Board has rotated. I'm not sure how much awareness into this the outside world has, but the Select Board has for a long time rotated this monthly and alphabetically. And while that might seem a little bit weird from the outside, certainly seemed a little weird to me from the outside, it actually works very well. So at this point, we need to either reaffirm or vote to change that rotation. Ms. Stein.
I move that the Select Board continue the current practice of rotating Chair, Vice Chair position monthly.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. All right, so everything stays the same. We are such a stable Select Board, I tell you. All right, very good. So, moving along. Moving along. The battery's dying in my recorder. Anybody have any announcements or anything that they would like to talk about before we get to the 6:50 item? I'd rather not start that early. Anything upcoming that folks should know about?
Well, yes.
Ms. Stein.
There is an open house on Saturday, the 20th, at Craig's Doors from 1 to 5.
So that will be at the First Baptist Church in the shelter area?
Correct.
Craig's Doors, 1 to 5. Thank you. And I'll also remind folks the same announcement that we made last week, and that was also on the town website, that on Monday, April 29th, at 5:00 PM preceding the Select Board meeting, we will have a coffee hour reception for Harrison Gregg honoring his long service as Town Moderator. The public is more than welcome, very invited to attend and express their great fondness and appreciation to Mr. Gregg for that service. So I hope that, I hope all the Select Board members can make it, and I hope that many of the public can make it. So that's from 5 to 6, essentially, on the Monday, the 29th. Ms. Stein.
I have another announcement. Thank goodness for calendars. On April 29th, people who have pharmaceutical-type drugs to dispose of and want to do so safely, there is going to be a collection at Wildwood. And I can't tell you the exact time, but the box at the police station is not accepting anymore. So people who do want to dispose of these safely should check on the 29th what the hours are.
Thank you very much. Ms. Brewer?
We need to put something about that on the town website, because I just got my sticker on Saturday, and I picked up a flyer that said to take things to the police station. So if we're not doing that anymore, then that needs, then that needs to be changed. And I know that that was, we were lucky to have that service here in town, that you could do it anytime, whereas lots of places, you can only do it on these irregular things.
I trotted down there with my little bag, and I saw the sign.
So, yeah, that would be good, for the transfer station to change that flyer, and also to put a quit note on the town website, that it's no longer possible to do it.
Okay, perfect. Now we're at 6:50. Thank you. Okay. So now we have our Personnel Board recommendation on the FY14 Non-Union COLA, that's the Cost of Living Adjustment. We have Human Resources Director Deb Radway here to talk to us about this. This is an annual recommendation that gets made to us. This is actually the town manager's recommendation after he has coordinated with the Personnel Board. We have an excellent memo explaining the situation, as well as a historical COLA chart in the packet, and that is available on the website for folks following along at home. So before I turn it over to Ms. Radway, Mr. Musanti, would you like to introduce us to this?
Sure. And I want to start by commending Deb Radway for her ongoing excellent work as HR Director, and it shows itself every day in some new initiative or improved upon practice related to working with all of our staff. So very briefly, on the, for the non-union portion of the workforce, at the February meeting of the Personnel Board, the Personnel Board endorsed my recommended 2% Cost of Living Adjustment for non-union employees for the fiscal year beginning July 1st. The Personnel Board also encouraged me to consider additional sources of compensation for non-union. The 2% figure is based upon our best judgment of local and statewide labor cost trends, and my assessment of the town's ability to pay, fiscal condition of the town, which I articulated in the budget proposal I presented back in January, which is basically, hasn't changed in terms of the status. This recommendation was endorsed by the Personnel Board, and then as we do each year in a more formal way, we had a non-union employee meeting with myself and Deb and the Personnel Board members in late March. We shared this information and got questions and comments from that. I also announced at that meeting that we would be implementing a health insurance premium holiday for the month of April because of our continuing positive health cost claims in comparison to budget. We're in a position where we can forego withholding of premiums by employees for the month of April. It also saves the town and the schools and library money in our budget for our share of that month's premium. It saved every employee who was on a health plan anywhere from $115 to $385 during the month of April, depending on what plan they were on. So that was a very positive thing. Also, I explained in the memo, and the Personnel Board will be involved in this as well, but as we get into the summer and fall, working to, on a compensation study for a non-union group, we haven't done a comprehensive compensation study since an in-house version back in 2007. This will allow us to really look at the marketplace in a more detailed manner by job title, and we'll look at the structure of our compensation plan as well, and that would be the basis for recommendations that would come back to me and through the Personnel Board for consideration later in the calendar year.
Thank you very much.
And Deb is here to fill in all those blanks that I left out of that summary, but, or answer questions.
Good evening. I really don't have anything prepared for this. I really did think I was just going to be here to support the town manager, and I'll just add that I think that the compensation study is a very important thing to embark on for the town. I think it's important to do an arms-length professional analysis of the entire plan. There's 75 people on the plan, 48 different positions, and it's time to relook at the whole structure. And I'm hoping that we can have, and get some quotes from professional consultants in early summer, execute a contract, conduct the study during the late summer and early fall, and have something for the town manager and your review mid-October, early November, certainly before the end of the calendar year, and in good preparation for the next fiscal year budget.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from the Select Board? Ms. Stein is our representative to the Personnel Board. Would you, or liaison, rather, would you have anything to add?
No, I think the study is a really good idea, both because, as Ms. Radway pointed out to the Personnel Board, our system of multiple steps within a position level is kind of archaic. And so I think this makes a lot of sense. And also, I think it's important for non-union personnel to know just how their salary fits into a bigger overview. And I think that that'll be a healthy, healthy outcome.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments?
We meet tomorrow.
And they meet tomorrow? Very good. I appreciate the information very much. I think that the recommendation is just as fair as it can be, given the circumstances. We continue to sort of struggle to come out of the recovery, the economic recovery, particularly at the state level and with the state aid made available to communities. I think that while, while folks, of course, would prefer to have more than 2%, considering the compensation study and considering the fact that there is a, no increase in the health insurance premiums for next year, I think that, like I said, that this is just as fair as can be, considering the circumstances that we're in. So I'm fully supportive of the recommendation.
If I could add, I have done a pretty exhaustive survey of comparable communities and other communities throughout the state, and of the 40 that I surveyed, there's really only a handful that did more than 2%. 2% seems to be the norm throughout the state, and often coupled with health insurance increase of between 3 and 12%.
Thank you. That's very helpful context. And that will be even more helpful going forward, once we have the compensation study. So that's great. This is something that we try and do every year, before we get into the operating budget, because obviously, the operating budget depends a great deal on what salaries are. So this is something that we do like to have settled beforehand. Do we have a formal motion on this?
We do.
Yes, okay.
I move that the Select Board authorize a 2% Cost of Living Adjustment COLA for all non-union step levels effective July 1st, 2013.
Further discussion? Ms. Reed? No? Anyone? No? Comment from anyone? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, and thank you for the good materials in our web packet. Okay, so 6:59, same as 7 o'clock. So our next item is accept Atkins Corner altered road layouts for West Street, Bay Road, West Bay Road, and two new roads built for the project. We have Mr. Guilford Mourning, Superintendent of Department of Public Works, and the newly-elected Select Board Member for the town of Hadley, who it does tonight. Welcome.
Hi, how you doing?
Good, thank you. Congratulations on your fine victory.
Thank you.
So we have in our packets information about why we are doing this now, and that this needs to be done in advance of town meeting, considering the Article 10. This is tied to Article 10, right? So we do this first, and then we'll get into all the other street acceptances. There is information, I just said that, in our packet. So go ahead and tell us what you'd like to us.
Actually, I was thinking of the best way to talk about this, and I can't separate the two without talking about Articles 10 and 11 as well. So I'm going to talk about the, both, what you have to do now, and then Articles 10 and 11.
Okay.
So if you remember way back, we started Atkins Corner Project. So this, we're now at the last thing we need to do. The project is within completion. Construction will be done the end of June. This is, this is the final paperwork wrap-up for a good part of the project. So, and we did the road, we actually moved the road over to the west, or to the east, and we adjusted some layouts, and we widened the road in some places. So to do that, you've authorized several times the town to take easements for drainage and for the public way and so forth. So now what we're doing is we're going to do the final paperwork wrap-up and accept those as public ways. Technically, they haven't been public ways yet, they were under construction. They've all been donated to the town, or gifted to the town for some amount of money. And now the process is that we accept the roads and bring it into the fold as a true town way, and then we own it and we maintain it for the rest of, the rest of the world. We also, when we moved the road, we moved the road out of its current layout, and the current layout is now in the middle of Atkins Parking Lot, and we need to discontinue that layout so that it can be owned by Atkins Corner and not owned by the town. So that's the whole process we're going through here, so they all go together. The first step of accepting it is that, as the, as our town attorney says, the Select Board will vote at a meeting its intention to lay out the Atkins Corner right away. And that's actually the items before you now. You have specific language that was laid out by the town attorney, which states that you are laying out this roadway, and you'll send this, and once you vote to do this, you'll also send a notice to the planning board, and they'll weigh in and make a decision as well as what they think of the, accepting the road layouts, and they'll forward that to town meeting as well. So the Select Board has to, what you're going to do tonight is give your intention to select layout the roadway, and then we'll go to town meeting, and then we'll actually go through the process of actually taking the layouts and making them public ways. That's what we're doing tonight, and we're starting the final process of the project, which is great.
That's great. Questions or comments about this from Mr. Mourning? Ms. Reed?
I think I may have missed this. We've spoken about this every six months for the last 10 years, and you forgot that removing the roadway to get underneath the telephone poles, and then again, to get underneath the cross ties and stuff like that. I just want to recall that Steph and I went out and walked the site with a whole bunch of folks. This is a state process, and we're new to this, so you can talk to the state people as well, and it looks like the right thing to do, actually.
All right, and to elaborate on Mr. Hayden's point, so this was, in fact, a county road previous- So this was, in fact, a county road previously. And so the layout had gone entirely outside the bounds of the county road. So to kind of start more of this process, we had several months ago a discontinuance hearing by the Hampshire Council of Governments, who had sort of authority over the road. So they discontinued it to us. And now, we have to go through this process, so. Anything else we need to know about this part?
No, but we're actually so excited. We're having like a mortgage fire after this project's done.
So hands over here, Ms. Stein and Ms. Brewer?
Well, I was just going to make the motion in the terms, I think, that are appropriate. And if it's not, somebody can correct me. But if Ms. Brewer had something first.
Sure, Ms. Brewer?
Aside from the fact that I thought that the town attorney told us to say it that way, but I'm sure he'll be fine, is this item, the layout modification, then, you know, this is the first step, but then the actual town meeting Articles are 10 and 11, right? Just to make sure I've got all the connected dots. All right.
Correct. Okay, so Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board vote its intention to alter the layouts of portions of Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street as public ways to include within said layouts the parcels of land shown on a plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land in the Town of Amherst, Hampshire County, Bay Road, West Bay Road, and West Street, altered and laid out by the Town of Amherst," end quote, dated December 2011, and that the Select Board forward the alteration of layout petition and plan to the Planning Board for its comments and recommendations pursuant to GL Chapter 41, Sections 81, G and 8, 8 what?
81I.
Aye.
81I, all right. That's what I was having trouble with, sorry.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That is unanimous. Thank you.
So that, just for clarification, John, that was the language that came to us separately? The move that the Select Board vote?
Yes, that's the correct language, and the town and council are in sync on that.
Okay, so now we are going to get into voting and assigning Select Board positions on town meeting warrant articles. And just so you know what the plan is, our goal is basically to get as far as we possibly can through taking positions on these tonight. So Article 16, which is the operating budget, is on there. And we will see how far through that we get. We have incredibly packed agendas for the next two meetings with even more complicated articles. The next meeting is going to be zoning and the school and library budgets, and the rental regulations, and the rental petition. Then the following meeting is going to be all of the other petition articles that weren't attached to either zoning, or the ones that we will have dealt with already. So we really have a ton going on. So what we're going to try and do is go through as much of these as possible. And at 8:30, we'll see where we are. We'll see if we want to continue to give it, you know, X amount of more time, or if we want to stop and continue with the operating budget, assuming we get that far, and I'm confident we will, next time. So oftentimes, we use this, we use our discussions as a big kind of educational opportunity for folks who might be watching this. I don't think this is the best opportunity to do that this year. I think that folks will need to be paying more attention, especially for the operating budget stuff. We're not going to review that in huge detail. All of that information is on the town website, plus there have been various, you know, lots of meetings that folks can review and get questions answered. So we'll see how far we get through this tonight. But anyway, that is the plan. Okay, so Article 6 is a street acceptance for Olympia Drive. And we have Mr. Zomeck and Mr. Perkins here from HAP to talk to us about this. Welcome.
Thank you very much. As you stated, I'm joined by Rudy Perkins, the Project Manager from HAP, to talk about one of your favorite projects, Olympia Drive and Olympia Oaks. And given your packed agenda, we'll try to be brief and give a very quick outline, and then respond to your questions. Discussion of Article 6, and again, in your packets, I believe, or at least sent to you by Mr. Perkins, was a very extensive summary of the project where they are from HAP's perspective. And I think Rudy is here tonight to take questions on that in just a few minutes.
Ms. Brewer is going to note that that wasn't in our packets, and that's true. But we did get it by email, by Select Board email.
Did get it by email.
Maybe a week or two ago?
I think it was more recent, I think it was over the weekend, actually.
This weekend? I thought it was a previous weekend.
No, this weekend.
Oh, okay, then.
I think, yeah, I think a lot of that information, I think a lot of that information is supplemental to the warrant article. It's more about the project in general.
So let me just note that if the Select Board doesn't feel that they're ready to vote on this tonight, then certainly, we can put that off. At the same time, this is sort of a very long and expected step in a process we have been following for a very long time. We almost did this in the fall, but because there were still technical things that needed to happen, and the town didn't want to have take, what are we doing? Taken possession of the road? Or taking possession of the road, as opposed to giving up the road? Whatever it is we're doing with the road.
Accepting the road as a public way.
Accepting it, right. We didn't want to have that responsibility over the snow season, et cetera, when there were still other moving parts going on. So, okay, go ahead.
So we did, the town meeting did part of that in the fall. You recall that some of the, the road acceptance itself was essentially, we pulled that back, and that was deferred until spring, if you will. But there was, the town meeting did authorize the Select Board to acquire easements from UMass for the utilities under the main road, the access road from East Pleasant Street to the site. And you may also recall that legislation has been filed by Senator Rosenberg's office to move that piece forward, and my understanding is that's in committee right now. The Article 6, so following up on some of our actions in the fall, we're revisiting the road acceptance. We believe we're ready for the road acceptance. And we did add one piece to that, which is the need to grant utility easements on the site itself. So not on the roadway between East Pleasant Street and the Olympia Oaks site, but actually on the site itself for Wameko, Verizon, and a few other utility easements. So that is essentially what Article 6 accomplishes. It accepts the road as a public way, and it gives the Select Board the ability to grant easements for utility work on the site itself, not on the roadway. So that's Article 6.
Questions or comments from Select Board? We can't let this opportunity pass without asking what the status of the project is and how things are going.
Turn it over to Mr. Perkins.
Well, one of the reasons I, I'm sorry I didn't get it to you earlier. I put together a quick update, well, not so quick, update report. And probably the most important piece of that is a summary of the status of the funding, because I think that was the main concern in November. Since November, DHCD finally agreed to go back. As you may recall, there was a long period of time, we were trying to restructure this as a 4% tax credit and bond deal at DHCD's request. Went through a long period of time, decided that couldn't work. Asked them to let us go back to a 9%. And as of the town meeting, we didn't have a definitive answer from them about that. And as a result, a lot of the funding was up in the air. In late January, we got word from DHCD, they let us go back to a 9% deal. We proceeded to structure that, then they changed it again a couple times. But we finally got it nailed down with them about the structure. We have one of their three, well, we have two of their four letters. DHCD's four letters on the funding. We have the HSITF for 1.715 million, and an extension on that that carries us now to this new period. And we have the project-based Section 8 subsidies. From the private tax credit syndicators, we have a letter, which I included in here, a commitment letter for the tax credit equity portion, that's about $8.4 million. And for the construction loan from the Life Initiative, which is 6.3 million outstanding balance and 7.1 million aggregate. The, basically, we've been told that the other couple of letters from DHCD were on the relevant person's desk being signed. We still haven't gotten them in hand. I should have them before town meeting and can update staff with the remaining letters. But once those come in, let's see, did I miss any that we've, that I attached? Life, oh, Interfaith Housing had also pledged, and we got a renewed letter committing their $100,000 in commitment for construction financing. Wameko actually significantly up their energy incentive commitment. About, it was over a hundred grand increase. And that letter was attached, $4,000 per unit in energy incentives. So with the remaining DHCD letters and the permanent funding letter of 460,000, we have gone through the whole discussion and picked the lender for that. They've given us terms, and they're just in their internal process for finalizing the commitment letter. I should have that before town meeting forward to. But with those pieces in hand, as you can see in the attachments, if you haven't seen them yet, that makes all the funding that we need. So unless there's some surprise in the two remaining state letters, that they're different from how we've discussed them with staff and what they've told us were coming, we think all of the funding is now committed, or will be written down, committed shortly. And we're ready to go in the closing process. Now, that process will take a few months, as anyone who's done one of these complicated things knows. And these are commitment letters, so I just want to make clear, there's a lot of conditions in them before the funding is absolute. They, you know, in a typical commitment letter, a lot of things have to come true before they give you the money. So, but they are commitment letters, and the conditions are not, nothing unusual or unexpected. I can't guarantee that the funding is absolutely there, but this is about as good as you get at the beginning of a closing process. You've got the commitments to do this if everything goes as expected. So that's where we stand. We've made the building permit application. The construction plans were finalized. I think that might have, that actually happened slightly after the town meeting. And now, we're just, I'm getting very busy, which means to me, the deal is coming together finally with many, many documents. But it looks good right now. And so, as you know, we've asked the town to accept the road and hope they can do so at the spring meeting.
Thank you very much. It certainly is an exercise in patience, and it certainly does demonstrate why it is so very complicated and takes a very long time to create affordable housing with public funds. It's a lot different than private investment. And thank you for shepherding this load these many years. Ms. Brewer?
So in theory?
Yes.
If things go approximately the way they should?
Right.
Timing for?
I've pegged it at August 1st as a closing and construction start date. Our general contractor is, like, he's already been asking me, when can I start? So we will start construction the day we close. If we could, there's even a chance, we have to wait for some, there's some preconditions, the HUD Environmental Review and the subsidy layering review, which we have yet to launch because we're waiting on something. But once those are complete, we might even be able to do some preliminary work before the final closing, although I don't want to commit to that. My hope is that certainly by August 1st, well, I should never say certainly. My hope is that it will be August 1st. I'm actually hoping we can get a start in July. But that would be things going real smoothly, and HUD turning around their review in the time that I've heard should happen. And then, it's a 12-month construction process. We were just talking today, if we needed to accelerate the time when the road work was done, put that towards the beginning, rather, towards the end, I'm sure that could happen once we're in construction.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from Select Board? Ms. Hayden?
I'm just wondering if the town sort of telegraphing its acceptance, its welcoming of this project helps some of those pieces of paper move a little bit more smoothly through their various processes?
I'm sure it wouldn't hurt. I think particularly on the legislative action, just expressing through our representatives the importance of this, getting high priority in the timing in the legislature, that will help. I think, and I don't know what moves HUD, frankly. I don't know if there's any way any of us can move HUD faster than they're going to move.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Just, yeah, and staff and I are fully in support of the article to accept the road, but also based upon our initial review of the very detailed summary that was contained in that email over the weekend about extending the land development agreement. I think what makes sense is to encourage the board to take action on the article tonight, and we can get you the full text with all the attachment of Mr. Perkins' explanation, and we can prepare the appropriate motion, perhaps, for your next meeting on the extension of the land development agreement through August 31st.
Thank you, sure. Ms. Stein?
We can do that next Monday.
So we'll go ahead and make the motion about Article 6. That'll be separate.
Right.
I move that the Select Board recommend to the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting, Article 6, Street Acceptance Olympia Drive.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in, appreciate all your good information. All right, Article 7, Street Discontinuance Eastman Lane. Mr. Mouring is here, and this was also part of that same county hearing that Mr. Hayden and I attended several months ago about discontinuing what had been a county road layout to the town. And now, the town is looking to discontinue it further. Mr. Mouring?
Yes, UMass came to us probably a year or so ago and talked to us about the fact that what everyone, everyone knew or everyone considered to be a UMass road, Eastman Lane, that there was actually a right-of-way for Eastman Lane that was owned by the county. And the funny thing was, is that the pavement for the road wasn't always in the right-of-way. So UMass had this paper right-of-way across their property, which was impinging on some of their abilities to do things, because they couldn't really, you couldn't really put a parking lot in the right-of-way. So they asked the town to go to the county, which is what's required, and asked the county to discontinue their layout, the county layout, to the town, so that the town could then discontinue the layout to the UMass. And that's the process we're in right now. So the county discontinued the layout to the town. It's now a town layout, and I guess technically, that means part of Eastman Lane is a town road now. The parts that are not on, in the layout that are on UMass property are UMass roads. So to clean up the whole mix now, we're trying to discontinue the county layout back to UMass, and that's what this article would do. So the vote would be to discontinue the county layout back to UMass.
And so you're saying that parts of the, that it's primarily UMass property anyway, with parts of the road actually now falling in town property, because the?
Because we own the county layout.
Because we own the county layout. Okay, thank you. Mr. Hayden? I'm sorry, before Ms. Brewer?
The, thank you. I am going to vote against this, mostly to make sure that everybody is aware of the campus master plan that University of Massachusetts has put out. I'm concerned that the master plan doesn't quite get as far as addressing its effects on the town. There's a great deal of emphasis on moving parking and traffic off of campus. And I can think of only one place it ends up, when it's no longer on campus. This road, while Eastman Lane is not slated, or even, it's not even a hint of its being discontinued as part of this plan, giving it up certainly could allow that to happen. And that coupled with the proposed parking structure for Tilson Farms would be a disaster. And I think we just need to keep our eyes on the ball, and we should read this and understand it.
Mr. Mouring, do you want to respond to Mr. Hayden's concerns?
Mr. Hayden, I have talked a lot about his concerns. As you said, in the, in the study, Eastman Lane is a vital part of the UMass master plan. UMass is talking about moving all of its facilities, support people, to Tilson Farms. UMass is talking about moving all of its facilities, support people to Tilson Farms. So they have the fire, our fire department, they have their police department, and all their public utilities and all their facilities maintenance people will be at Tilson Farms. And the only way to get in and out of there easily is down Eastman Lane. And that's why there's no mention that they're going to close Eastman Lane. In the master plan, there is discussion about closing and restricting flow on some of the roads on campus and some of the roads that are off campus, which is North Pleasant Street. There is discussion about that as a long range thing. It's not an immediate change they want to do, it's a long range. So Mr. Hayden's correct is that there is a 50-year master plan the university is working on. People should look at it, people should take an eye, eye at it and look and see how it impacts the town and make constructive comments and, constructive comments to UMass and say this is something the town thinks should be done and as people and residents, this is what you think should be done. But there is really no plan in there to close Eastman Lane right at this point. So for the next 50 years, which is what that plan says, Eastman Lane will stay open.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer.
So just to spin that out a little longer with hopefully not belaboring this to death, because this is a little different. I mean, usually these are very much whatever, you know, sure, we looked at it, we understand it, it's all fine. But this is a little different. And so if we own it, if we own it versus they own it, what do you see the difference as being in the next, you know, they, they don't have, they have the option to use it, obviously, if it's theirs. You think they would want to use it if it's theirs. So am I understanding that we're talking about a leverage point versus an actual function of the road? Because if we still own the road, they're going to use it the same way they use it now. We don't have to maintain it if it's not our road, so we don't have to pave it, we don't have to plow it, it's their problem.
Correct. The one thing to realize is because the road, the actual pavement is not in the layout and crosses on the UMass property, they could close it.
But they could close it.
Because it's on UMass property. They could say, well, we're just going to close it and reroute it somewhere and disconnect it from the pavement that's in the layout. So there, no one really has any leverage here. It's all, it all, is all the way it is. Eastman Lane's always been considered a university road, it's been maintained by the university. They've upgraded the road, they've moved it as they needed to for the campus. But it's always been there and it's always been a vital link on the campus between the east side and the central part of campus. So I, it's, there really is nothing that I think is going to change, and there's nothing in the master plan that says it's going to change.
Ms. Bezanti and then Ms. Stein, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Brewer.
So, so then I think what I'm hearing is that really, actually, this is like all the other road discontinues as we do, in that we're really not, we're not going to be doing anything different because of the funny way it's been laid out.
That's correct.
With that paving on and off, et cetera. So we haven't been plowing it, we haven't been paving it, et cetera, so that, none of that's going to change.
Correct.
Ms. Bezanti?
Yeah, just a couple summary points. UMass has made very clear throughout their planning process so far, they have no intention of closing or discontinuing Eastman Lane. It is and will remain a very important connector road. The town discontinuing its acceptance of portions of Eastman Lane ensures that, as has, as has been the case, that it will be the university and not the town that expends funds to maintain and, you know, upgrade the road as needed going forward and do the annual maintenance such as plowing. The university master plan and some of their transportation planning makes reference to North Pleasant Street, you know, desire to improve pedestrian access, safety, et cetera. The town, going back a couple of years now, has made very clear to the university that we believe strongly that North Pleasant Street through the campus should, should remain open to, through traffic. And we have all the leverage in the world on that one because that is a town road. And any, any change in its status would require town approval. And then I think the third point is really, I think where Mr. Hayden was, was focusing on was, we need to do some additional, have some additional dialogue with the university about the impacts of their, potential impacts of some of their transportation-related master planning about off-campus traffic. And so that's an ongoing, ongoing discussion, whether it's Tilson Farm or, or some of the other, some of the other changes they're contemplating.
Thank you. Some of which could be covered by the, by the town ground strategic planning we're about to embark on.
Yes.
I'm going to call Ms. Stein and then Mr. Hayden.
Well, I was just going to say, I can't imagine that they would want to close Eastman Lane given fire safety. I, I think, you know, it's the fastest way to some of their dorms. And so to me, I, I can certainly support this without any concern.
Thank you. Ms. Hayden?
So I would just add two things to, to Mr. Bezanti's speech. First of all, the, the planning that's in here for North Pleasant Street is actually very fine. It resembles in many ways the, the work of the planning board and their, their form-based code, what a mixed-use street should look like. That's actually, that's actually very, very nice. My concern, of course, is what's not in here. And as to whether or not they would, the university would ever want to close it, it's true, they would, would really not be wise for them anyway to close it against fire trucks and their service vehicles. It is completely in keeping with the objects of this plan to close it to commuters and other kind of regular traffic. And while that may not be a huge concern that they would do that, it's something that we really need to be mindful of, in part because, in my mind, because we've made some mistakes in the past that sort of let things slip by, which have impacted our neighborhoods profoundly and in very negative ways. And I just want us to keep our eye on all.
Thank you. Could you be more specific about that part? I don't want to go on with this forever. It's 7:30 already, we've got two articles. But what do you mean when you talk about having been, failing to, to pay close attention to things in the past? Are there university roads or properties that have, that have changed for the, for the worse from our perspective?
The most cogent example, I think, is, involves the park, the creation of the southern parking lots, the parking lots which are most easily accessed by going up Lincoln Avenue. When those parking lots were put in, I spoke with the people who were responsible for the town side of those decisions, there was no requirement to assess traffic, the, how it would affect traffic. It would have been a very simple question to ask, how's this going to affect Lincoln Avenue? Oh, that's interesting. Would you consider improving the intersections coming up from a major road, U Drive or Route 116? That wasn't it. And I think we all understand the impact of that. Mr. Mauring points out, I've read it correctly, that that's only the closest intersection. There are other, other intersections that are further away, which are similarly impacted. So it's not only Lincoln Avenue, but Lincoln Avenue and Amity Street, Lincoln Avenue at North Hampton Road, University Drive at North Hampton Road, those are all things that are affected by that one decision. Similarly, the traffic on Sand Hill Road is all traffic, it was displaced off of North Pleasant Street. Those commuters, at one time, when East Pleasant Street was not as, pleasant a journey as it is now, they were on North Pleasant Street. And that, the need for that road was, was less, the use of that road is less. Now, the bridge is out, of course, now things are going to have to shift around again, let's say, down Eastman Drive.
Okay. I, I guess I'm not really sure about the, about the university's role in the decision-making on some of that, is, along with the town's role and how some stuff could have been prevented. So we cannot change history. I appreciate your, your points very much, and I think that the point of staying aware and engaged and, and helping them be circumspect about their decision-making is a good one. But I, I don't think I'm going to apply that by objecting to this, but, okay.
Yeah, also, sort of today, with all of this in mind, we do have a traffic study which is underway, which will address some of these things, I believe, and then we can feedback, you know, maybe fill in some of the gaps that exist here. So that's, that's all good stuff.
Okay. Anything more we want to talk about with this tonight? Or we'll be here all night long. Okay, Ms. Stein, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 7, Street Discontinuance Eastman Lane.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
No.
Abstaining? That is four in favor, one opposed, zero abstaining.
One opposed.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Stein.
You need to assign, or we need to decide.
Oh, thank you.
Who's speaking to Article 7 and 6, so we can go on filling out our.
Thank you very much. So Olympia Drive, that's kind of in Ms. Brewer's bailiwick.
Yeah, I guess.
And Eastman Lane? Someone want to speak to Eastman Lane?
I, I think Mr. Hayden should speak.
You're going to speak to it even though you opposed it? I don't know if we want.
I'm really comfortable with that. I work with the Senate.
Okay. So you're not going to confuse people with the, the speaking to.
I'll try and do that.
So, okay. Unless somebody wants to steal it, Ms. Brewer?
I, I don't want it. But did you oppose it or abstain?
I opposed.
That's what I thought you said the first time. Okay.
Okay. So we're all comfortable with him speaking to it anyway, right? Whatever. Okay. Moving right along, Article 8, Southeast Street.
So Article 8 is Southeast Street. This is actually a section of sidewalk that people have been talking about since before I've gotten, before I came to the town. We actually submitted this project as a community development block grant project. We don't know if we're actually going to do it, but we do need the easements to do anything out there. So before you, you have actually a set of plans and you actually have the actual takings we need to do. So what we need to do is be given permission to take these easements so we can build the sidewalk. And as always, if someone comes back to us and says, well, we'll give you the easement, but we need to be paid for it, we would come back for the authorization to pay for the takings.
Thank you. So this is permission for the easements, to negotiate the easements, basically, to take them and compensation would be a different issue in the future. And this is for sidewalks on Southeast Street, this is primarily connecting Colonial Village down to the?
Down to Route 9.
Which would be very valuable and terrific. Questions or comments? Ms. Hayden?
Just a comment, as someone who often travels that stretch of road, it would be a good thing to have a sidewalk there.
Oh, yeah.
This is a very commonly used thoroughfare for residents of Colonial Village to get to the services which are on Cull Street.
Definitely. All right. Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 8, Acquisition of Easements Southeast Street, CDBG Sidewalk Project.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
And who's going to speak to it?
I would like to speak to Southeast Street Sidewalk Project.
Yeah, I guess I can do that.
Ms. Brewer, okay, thank you. Article 9, Western Mass Electric Easements Boltwood Walk.
So in front of Douglas Funeral Home, there's actually a transformer vault under the sidewalk. That vault has some serious issues. It actually shorts out from time to time. And when the vault shorts out, it actually causes Douglas Funeral Home, Super Bowl, and a few other places in that area to lose power. And it'll be the only place in town that has no power. Lights at Kellogg loses power too. Kellogg and North Pleasant, they lose their power. So the property owner has been talking to Wemco, and Wemco's agreed to actually take the transformers out of that vault and put it in what they call, it's an underground feed still, but it's an above-ground transformer. So there's little green boxes you see around town, mostly in the subdivisions. It's an above-ground transformer, but it's not on a pole. So in order to do that, they cannot put the transformer in the middle of the sidewalk where the vault is, so the transformer vault has to move onto the grass. They're going to put it on Douglas Funeral Home property, but they may need to also cover part of the town property, which is the walkway, which goes from North Pleasant Street back to the parking garage. It's called Boltwood Walk, or is actually, when we were building it, we liked to call it Starbucks Walk, because the guys always got their coffee right there and they enjoyed the coffee's place. So there may be a need for the town to grant an easement to Wemco to place this vault and the above-ground transformer on town property. And that's what this article will do, will give the town manager permission to grant that easement to Wemco when they decide where they're going to put this transformer.
Okay. Questions or comments? Ms. Stein?
How big is this vault compared to the existing one? I mean, it looks little on this, but I thought from the dimensions, it seemed kind of large.
It's actually, it could fit in between the, right in the middle here where you're sitting. The vault is about four feet in diameter, it's a round circle, and the above-ground transformer is four foot by four foot by about two and a half feet tall.
Is the existing vault that size?
No, the existing vault is probably eight foot wide by 16 foot long, and it's eight foot deep.
Okay. So we're not going bigger? That's, that was my concern when I read this. I wasn't sure.
Ms. Brewer?
So, just to place it in my mind, because I didn't go look before I did this, like you said, Starbucks Walk. Currently, that's where the grates are.
Yes.
That, that are just this one unusual place that we have these grates.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, and so who cares how big it is because it's underground, but when we put up the, when we put this new box out, obviously you've thought about this in terms of, you know, it, what's the side, the sidewalk access could be impacted, but I mean, it's not going to be narrowed so much that it's going to be, it's not going to turn it into an alleyway there. I mean, it's not going to turn it into an Antonio's Alley. It's going to still be wide enough, you know, wheelchair access, stroller access, that sort of thing.
It's not going to be on the sidewalk at all. We, we own a section of grass space beside the sidewalk. It'll still be on grass.
Grass, okay. So it won't come into what the current walkway is at all. It's just that technically, we own part of the grass and they own part of the grass.
Yes.
Excellent.
Excellent. Ms. Hayden?
Can I oppose this because they're ugly? Can I support this because those underground transformers are not very reliable in bad weather?
Maybe we could get some public art on it.
Okay. Further discussion about this one? Ms. Stein?
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 9, Grant of Electrical Easements Boltwood Walk.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Mr. Hayden seems kind of engineering-y.
I'm, I'm technical.
Oh, right. Yes. Okay. 10 and 11, back to the conversation we started with at 7 o'clock. Mr. Mauring?
So the only thing I'd like to add is in your packet, you have the plans for the layout for Atkins, and then you'll see they're color-coded. The yellow is actually the land we're giving, we're discontinuing. So just so you know, and if there's any other questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any other questions? This is all the Atkins, Atkins Corner acceptances and the conveyance of the discontinued, so they're just related. These are things that are not rights of way that are necessary anymore. No further comment or question? Ms. Stein, Article 10.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 10, Accept Altered Layouts, Layouts of Rights of Way Atkins Corner.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. And we'll pair it with 11 and then we'll do the assignment.
Want me to go ahead and? I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 11, Conveyance of Discontinued Rights of Way Atkins Corner.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Who's speaking to those?
Thank you.
We're looking at you.
Thank you for the information. Yeah.
Who's doing them?
Yes.
You're that guy.
I've lost track again of who's doing what, but I'll get it.
Don't worry, we'll fill you in. Okay. So Article 19 now is capital, and we have Sandy Poehler here, Finance Director. In our town meeting packets, we have the Joint Capital Planning Committee's report on all the capital items, so folks should have had the opportunity to review those. Have town meeting members received those yet? Does anybody know?
First mailing, yes.
First mailing.
Yeah. As of Sunday, they hadn't been received. Do you know when they, did they get them Monday?
My husband got it before Sunday.
Yeah, you got yours in your packet. I was just wondering if we knew of any town meeting members who don't live in our houses.
So you're saying your husband, who is a town meeting member, got his?
Well, my husband's came in the mail. I thought, oh, maybe not.
Yeah. Question unanswered, moving right along.
Oh, it should be by now.
Mr. Poehler, thank you very much. So I don't think we need to go into a great detail on this stuff. Ms. Stein and Mr. Wald have been giving us excellent updates on all of the capital stuff as we've gone along through the JCPC's process, and we do have all of the information in our, in our select board packets. So this information is in the select board packet online, as well as us having received it in our town meeting packet. So does anybody have any questions about Article nine? Or do you want to introduce this before we go kind of topic by topic? Are you good? Okay, good. We all know how this works. Yeah, so equipment. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the equipment part of the capital recommendation? Very well, Ms. Stein?
I move that the select board recommend the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article nineteen, capital program, equipment, in the amount of dollars that will be filled in.
In the amount of dollars?
I just realized, it's not. Not in our motion sheet. And I would like to speak to it. How's that?
Is the amount in the warrant, or do we have, do we not have an amount for that yet?
Uh, let's see. I've got the warrant right here, and...
It is in the warrant.
Yes, it is. So then I can...
And it matches, right? Nothing's changed.
Let's see. No, wait a minute. This is nineteen.
One hundred and eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five.
Okay.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
And as I said, I would like to speak to that one.
It's all yours, Ms. Stein.
I got it, right?
Article twenty.
Never take your JCPC.
Okay, now I can fill in the money. I just have to get organized here. Shall I go ahead and make the next one?
Certainly.
All right, I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twenty, capital program, buildings and facilities, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand, five hundred dollars.
Further discussion. Questions on buildings and equipment, or buildings and facilities? I don't know. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Ms. Stein or Mr. Wald?
I'm happy, or if Mr. Wald wants to do it, or... All right, I'll take that one too then.
Perfect. Twenty-one, capital bond authorization.
That's not very complicated. Okay, shall I make the motion?
Sure.
I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twenty-one, capital program, bond authorizations, in the amount of, and there are three amounts here, four hundred thousand for pumper truck, four hundred and twenty-five thousand for purchasing two large trucks and a bucket truck for the Public Works Department, and four hundred thousand for replacing the boiler and making associated repairs at Wildwood. So there are three under the bond authorization.
Further discussion. Mr. Poehler, anything else we need to know about bond authorizing?
I think it's a good time to borrow, because interest rates are low.
And you need a bunch of money to borrow at one time for it to be monetarily sound. I'll be happy to speak to them. Oh, we have to vote first.
All in favor, I'm sorry, Mr. Hayden.
Yep, we do.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And Article twenty-two, this was one that we actually had information on last time, but we didn't, we didn't deal with it because it hadn't been on our agenda, but this is capital debt rescission. And so if you didn't look back on your material from last time, this is debt that was authorized in two thousand and seven for handicap ramp and other alterations to be made to the East Street School. And those alterations did not happen, and that, that debt, the ability to borrow for that is no longer necessary. So it is considered good accounting housekeeping to clean up your, your debt authorizations periodically. So we're looking to rescind that authorization. Is that about right? Excellent. Further questions about that? Ms. Stein?
I move that the select board recommend the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twenty-two, capital program, debt rescission, in the amount of eighty thousand dollars.
Further discussion, Ms. Brewer?
I'm so sorry. I don't recall, and I'm not seeing it here in front of me, though it probably is. What are we going to do with the money?
Nothing.
Nothing. It's not money. It's the ability to borrow.
It's the ability to borrow, exactly. So... Yeah, exactly, because you can't apply it to something else. Right, thank you. I knew it was there someplace. Thanks.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. One of our capital people. Mr. Wald, do you want this one? Mr. Wald, okay.
Who's speaking to the previous?
Oh, yeah, bond authorization. Whoever, Mr. Wald, do you want to do bond authorization also? Go together well. Excellent, okay.
Jim is doing the bond authorization?
Yes, twenty-one and twenty-two. Okay, so that's the end of capital. We're now at Community Preservation Act. And did we have anybody coming in for this, do we know?
My understanding was we were expecting the chair.
Yeah, maybe he didn't think we were going to move along so fast.
We could, sure, we could do other things, and maybe they'll come in, Ms. Brewer.
While we're thinking about that, just to let everyone know, I really appreciate that we have the assignment sheet in here. There is a mistake, however, on it, and so we'll go over that at agenda setting tomorrow or something. But it showed that we already did Article nineteen and that I was going to speak to it, which isn't true.
Yeah.
So whatever. But we're keeping this up for you, Ms. Stein. It'll all be good.
Good, please do, because I have enough pieces of paper.
Okay, then moving right along. So we'll skip over Article twenty-four right now in hopes that someone comes in for that. And if they don't, then we'll decide what we'll do with it. So we'll do Article twenty-three, which is water and sewer debt. And this is for the, the borrowing that needs to happen for the sewer expansion stuff that we dealt with.
No, this is for work on Pine Street.
Oh, that's right.
So it's to replace the water and sewer pipes on Pine Street from Henry to...
North Pleasant.
North Pleasant, thank you.
Even better, that's right. When we talk about water and sewer debt authorization, it's just, water and sewer debt, I just go into the sewer expansion mode. But no, this is sewer maintenance and replacement mode, water and sewer on Pine Street, which will be just a magnificent improvement, the beginnings of road improvement. Questions or comments about that?
I'm having a problem that I have to share with you all. Sorry, but if I'm going to make these motions, it better be clear to me. I've got Article twenty-two is water and sewer debt, but when I look on the warrant, Article twenty-two is debt rescission. So...
So we just did debt rescission.
Which we just did. So this is twenty-three, and the motion sheet is wrong, correct?
The motion sheet is wrong. The warrant is right. The agenda is right.
Yep, it's Article twenty-three.
Okay.
And there are two parts, A and B.
And there are two parts, so one's A and one's B. Okay.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go right ahead.
Okay. I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twenty-three A, water and sewer debt, part, well, sorry, take out the A that I said. Twenty-three, water and sewer debt, part A, in the amount of one million dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
Who's going to speak to it?
Let's do part B first.
Okay. I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twenty-three, water and sewer debt, part B, in the amount of one million dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous. Mr. Hayden, this is looking sort of engineering-y also. What do you say? Debt for engineering, you know? Okay, thank you. Next up, FY thirteen budget amendments, which is Article twelve. And we've got information in our packets. Yep, memo here. Mr. Poehler, tell us anything you want us to know. So we've just got a couple of budget amendments here. What do you want us to know about this? We've got the memo.
So I think the most important thing about the first one is when you see the motion on A, it'll be for a lesser amount than is in the warrant. As we kept reviewing some of these accounts, the comptroller pointed out that of this forty-three thousand, that was sort of excess in our debt service account. And just by the way, the reason it is in excess is because when we sold our debt, we had savings, and there was some money in there that was ready to appropriate in case we wanted to issue bond anticipation notes, and we didn't issue those, and so we had some excess money. Some of that money was money that the school department is reimbursing the town for some of the debt on one of the school projects for the...
Southeast, South Campus.
South Campus.
Yeah.
It's a split project, sort of, that we agreed with the school department that we would do some of it, and they would pay for some of it. And so then when Sonia looked at the specifics of it, she said, well, that kind of reimbursement is not really there to reappropriate to something else, because it then screws up all our other reporting, so we took that out. So it means that there'll be thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars when you see the motion on, on A. And since that's a lesser amount, that will be within the scope. And so that money is being transferred into community services to cover what we know right now is looking at a deficit in the bedroom services account. Thought it'd be better to cover some of that. Now, it's always a tricky account to figure, because people come and go from the rolls between now and the end of June, and we don't know what the exact deficit is, but we know there's going to be something, and we know we have this excess in debt service. So that's what A is all about. And then B and C are about moving money into the OPEB fund. B is, is the result of the health insurance holiday, where we're not taking deductions from employees or matching that with town employer contributions into the health insurance trust fund, and instead taking that money and moving it into the OPEB fund. C is about taking the reimbursement that we get from the federal government for Medicare, these benefits that we provide to retirees for drug coverage. We get reimbursed from the federal government every year as sort of an incentive to make sure that employers continue to offer that benefit. We've traditionally put that money into the health insurance trust fund, but now that we have an OPEB fund, we think it should go into the OPEB fund. D is an insurance recovery. When there was a leak in the roof here, I think it's actually some equipment up there that ruined that TV. We had insurance recovery, insurance recovery that's more than twenty thousand dollars has to be appropriated by town meeting. You can't just take the money and pay off your claims. So that's why we need town meeting action on that. The total cost of that is actually more than twenty thousand dollars, about twenty-nine thousand dollars. So at some point, we're figuring, we're going to have to go to the finance committee to get a transfer out of the reserve fund for the, some portion of the remainder, depending on how much money is left in the IT's department's budget at the end of the year, because they went and spent the money to have that nice new TV there. And finally is the overlay deficit. Every year we set aside money for overlay, as you all know, to pay abatements. And each year's overlay is a separate account. The two thousand nine account is in deficit because, basically because of a case called the Verizon case for the acting of wires and poles. There was a case that the city of Newton and Boston brought all, was appealed to the appellate tax board and said that cities and towns had jumped the gun by starting to tax those things too soon. We do tax them now going forward, but from two thousand nine going back, hundreds of communities tried to tax, including Amherst. That case was lost in court, and so we had to pay Verizon an abatement on their taxes more than had been anticipated. And so that will be funded from a declaration that will happen tomorrow night by the assessors of overlay surplus, from surplus from other, all other years. We have surpluses built up in other years. And we will use some portion of that to put F, two thousand and nine in balance. We're required every year by the Department of Revenue to have these accounts in balance. If we didn't do it now, we'd have to do it on the recap sheet and put it on the tax rolls next year. So it's, we just want to get it cleaned up now.
Ms. Stein?
I'm curious about the overlay account. Each year we put a certain amount into it, but this is the first time I can remember us actually having to use it. Am I wrong? And how much money are we talking about?
We always use some of it.
We did.
But usually there's enough...
To cover it.
To cover. This, because the Verizon case was a very big case, there wasn't enough.
Okay. So, but we'll be all right from the other years where we had the excess to pay it off and still be okay in the future.
That's exactly right.
And periodically, the, the excess in the overlay account accrues to the free cash.
Well, yeah, once the assessors declare that they are done with this money and it's safe to let it go, they, they declare what's called overlay surplus, and then at the end of the year, that becomes free cash.
Thank you. Ms. Brewer?
How much money do we override altogether? I don't need to know that this second, but I think it, I think to give people an idea of the scope of what that, what we fought for in the legislature to get this to happen, now we have to give some of it back for that certain time period, but that it, it's money, it's real money moving forward that we do get to keep. So it would probably, so because this balance, this forty-one, eight-one-four, is to cover what couldn't be covered in the overlay account already, but it doesn't tell us what the total is that, for the actual Verizon problem.
I will find out the answer to that.
It's just sometime before town meeting.
Yeah, but I will tell you, it's probably about in that range, from what I remember, but I will get you a precise figure. In other words, it's about in this forty to fifty thousand dollar range.
It is roughly all that the Verizon problem is costing us, but that's just forty-one thousand. We don't normally have in that account. Okay. But that would be good, again, just to have the scope of how many years that it covered.
Other questions or comments? Just in case anyone is really paying wrap detention at home, just so nobody gets the idea that it's a twenty-nine thousand dollar television. It's not. And the memo makes clear that there was, there was a great deal of electronics equipment. It's all housed in that closet behind those walls there that were very damaged by the roof leak. So the television was the most obvious part, but everything else is, like, it wrecked a, it wrecked a new sound system that we got that is used for meetings that, that don't, that aren't broadcast on ACTV. So it's got great microphones and an amplifier for, for stuff and all kinds of other things in that closet that I never go into, but it's the closet that runs the room. So, okay, further discussion on any of these. Ms. Stein would like to make this motion.
Yeah. I forget exactly where I am. I'm going through twelve parts.
So you start at the bottom of page two.
Okay, got it, thank you. I was marking things, so I got lost, sorry. I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twelve, FY thirteen budget amendments, part A, in the amount of thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and ten. Are we going to do it parts A, B separately, or do you want to need a, I guess?
Is this going to be separate motions under the article, or is it going to be all?
Looks like it is, so I think maybe we should just vote that one first.
Okay. Further discussion, Ms. Brewer?
Alyssa, Alyssa's just going to volunteer to take all these, because they're finance committee articles, and she's just going to say, uh-huh, except for maybe the Verizon comment, so, just a thought.
So Alyssa's going to do this, and let's vote.
But a bunch of these.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twelve, FY thirteen budget amendments, part B, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twelve, FY thirteen budget amendments, part C, in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that is unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twelve, FY thirteen budget amendment, part D, in the amount of twenty thousand, seventy-one dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
Okay, there's one more, I guess, or did you know? Yeah. I move that the select board recommend to the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, Article twelve, FY thirteen budget amendments, part E, in the amount of forty-one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Ms. Raiden? Mr. Hayden.
Can all of these be on the consent calendar? I'm sort of looking for opportunities here.
Yeah, it's up to the moderator. He's taking comment on that, so if you're interested in suggesting that to him.
Department of Rec. did, because there's some, there's a certain requirement, it could be just a, you hold on to those things. It has to be some sort of agreement to discuss the details, which are not in debate, maybe, I don't know. Okay.
Which is what, then people would take it off the consent calendar. Right, because you can't have questions and answers on something that is on the consent calendar. So, so either people would support it and, and accept, right, that there, that you weren't going to do questions and answers on that or five people would say, "We're discussing it, pull it off."
We're watching this discussion in rapture and so.
There's that. All right, speaking of rapture, now we have Article 16, the town operating budget. This is the town portion and the enterprise funds as far as we get. As I mentioned at the beginning, town, no, school and library budgets will be considered next week. We have been having ongoing discussion, or ongoing opportunity for discussion of the town manager's budget for, since January, as well as before that, as far as our guidelines, et cetera. We have had a number of questions submitted and answered. If anybody is not, certainly we can continue to ask questions now, but if anybody is concerned that they have further questions that don't allow them to vote for any of these, either that they want the, our vote deferred or they, they want to abstain or object or whatever, that's all fine. So procedurally, if you have any issues with this as we go on, just let me know. Otherwise, we shall start with Article 16 and the operating budget. The operating budget is divided into many different motions, or different budget categories and different motions. Mr. Poehler, do you know if the finance committee has determined the order that they're going to go for the different budget areas yet for their motions? They haven't, yeah. Very good. So they will determine that and so how that proceeds at town meeting will be up to them. Okay, so then, what do we start with? The first part is debt service. And debt service is in the amount of $1,959,603. Mr. Musante.
Yeah, just, the dollar amounts that are recommended in the various motions for the operating budget are the identical to the budget proposal that I recommended back in January with two exceptions. Debt service being one of them because of the bond sale in early March and our, which included, you know, very competitively low interest rate and savings resulting from refinancing a piece of our old debt. The dollar amount is slightly lower by about $2,000. And then the other spot is in the, other spots are in the general government and conservation and development budgets. They include the staffing-related costs to the rental regulations by law. That assumes a January 1 implementation date. So the conservation and development budget for an inspector in a permanent administrative position and their associated employee benefits that are budgeted in general government are, those dollar amounts are slightly higher as a result.
Okay. All right, so, so starting with debt service and knowing that this is all the same as the budget book that we have been pondering over these many weeks and months, any questions about the debt service recommendation? All right, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board recommend the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget debt service in the amount of, it's going to be somewhat different, but $1,959,603.
Further discussion. So, Mr. Musante, you're saying the number is different than that?
No, that's the revised lower number.
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's different from the book?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. Who would like to handle the operating budget articles this year? Like Ms. Burr was saying before, the, these are finance committee ones. They speak to everything that's complicated and you just say yes, what they said. And also if, if the select board has, throughout any of its budget process, raised other points that we thought were worth referencing that finance committee didn't mention, then of course we have the opportunity to say it as part of that statement as well. So, were you volunteering? Mr. Hayden, thank you very much. Okay, next up we have, where am I? Conservation and Development. So again, you said this is a different number. This is a number that's $1,010,848 and that is the corrected number.
Yes.
Okay. Questions or comments about the conservation and development budget? Ms. Hayden.
Just one, it's a little bit of a stretch, but I was looking at the, the report that we get on enforcement actions by this department that we got it yesterday or this evening.
Right.
And I just, I noticed how many more items there are on it than have ever been before. And that's supported by this number. Just to say it.
Through the Safe and Healthy Neighborhood Working Group process, I learned just a tremendous amount about what that department is doing. It's just, there's a, there's a huge shift in priority and, and work direction in that department now. And the, the complaints are being very seriously tracked proactively and reactively and, and they're doing great work. All of those reports end up in the select board packets. They also are on the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods webpage and folks should check those out. So those are reports from the code enforcement officials from inspections as well as health. So, and at some point that will be more automated. It's going to be part of Munis or something like that. So they aren't going to be kind of like PDFs of weird spreadsheets, but. Better than nothing. And, and really wonderful to be putting out there to the community what exactly is going on there and the status of these things. Right, thank you. All right, other questions or comments about conservation and development? And Ms. Stein.
I move that the select board recommend the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, conservation and development, in the amount of $1,018,48.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. So, Mr. Hayden, I don't know if you were intending to volunteer for all of them, but that's typically how we do the operating budget is one person takes it. If you want to, if you want to take back, you're volunteering, that's okay. Okay, so we will stop asking and just know that Mr. Hayden will, will do all the operating budget. Yes, thank you. Okay, next up then, the community services budget in the amount of $1,708,238. And this was the other one you said that has the, this is the corrected amount.
Yes.
That's changed slightly. Questions or comments about this budget? And Ms. Stein.
I move that the select board recommend the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, community services, in the amount of $1,708,238.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous. Next up, public safety in the amount of $9,99,025. Then, Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, public safety, in the amount of $9,099,25.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. And I'll just note, because it does sort of feel like we're going through these quickly, a point that we make periodically, but it's always worth repeating, is that not only have we had this budget for a while, but this is actually just the same budget that we've been working with for many years. We went through, through several years of cutting, 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 and now in the last couple of years, we've been lucky to just be maintaining. So there aren't significant differences in these budgets and, and so we, we're very comfortable with them and know them pretty well. Okay, next up.
I move, shall I?
Yes.
Shall I move? I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, Public Works, in the amount of $2,020,127.
Further discussion. Questions or comments on the Public Works budget? This is not directly related to this, but a conversation we were having earlier, oh, about capital. And the memo, the JCPC report noted, which I thought was a good one, that, that we're not actually making a, an article, we don't have an article on Chapter 90 this year because where, we have traditionally had a Chapter 90, which is the road money article on the warrant, we learned that we don't have to do that. That's, that's grant funding that does not need to be appropriated, so that's not there, which is not part of the Public Works budget. But it did remind me that I had wanted to mention that earlier. Okay, anything else about Public Works? And all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, general government, in the amount of $6,402,43.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, water fund, in the amount of $3,813,478.
Further discussion about the water fund. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that is unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, sewer fund, in the amount of $3,767,404.
Further discussion, sewer fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, solid waste fund, in the amount of $535,895.
Further discussion. Solid waste is all in the news these days. So do you have anything interesting to tell us about solid waste fund? Anything that's changed since the town manager's budget recommendation? This is the fund that has, that is in danger of a shortfall in the future and we have solid waste management issues in sort of the short term. Anything we should know?
Something needs to change. I don't know what it's going to be. Landfills are closing and they're, so, but there's nothing that has changed with those stories you've read in the paper that's affecting the operations of the fund this year. It's on target to be in balance, partly because we cut back our expenses as much as we can. And, but, so outside of the budget process, there's a whole discussion about what to do, about whether to maintain a transfer station or close it down or treat our trash recycling differently than we do. But there's none of that included in the budget recommendation.
And is there any sort of a timeline expectation for when, when that will be an issue? Is it potentially a mid-year change, something we deal with at fall town meeting or a budget adjustment next spring? Or are we looking further out?
Well, there are some fundamental operational decisions that have to be made that go beyond budget issues as to whether the town wants to stay in the business of having a transfer station. That's going on in the refuse and recycling committee discussions now. And my understanding is that they do not have a consensus yet as to what direction to head in on that. We, so I think we sort of limp along with the solid waste fund. I don't anticipate we have, we'll get through this year. We may even get through next year. We may even get through the year after that, but the day of reckoning is coming. And so again, I think what you'll see next are some recommendations about different ways to, to handle refuse and recycling before you see a different budget.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Burr.
So I'm thinking timing-wise, we're looking at town manager goals for FY 15? In terms of present, starting to report out on what my, I mean, when we have the conversation about FY 15? To start to report out on what the process might be. I mean, it isn't now.
Yeah, I think that's, I can envision with staff and with the recycling refuse management committee, coming to the select board with some preliminary recommendations and getting feedback from you and the community.
Okay, that's good.
Yep.
Thank you. Further discussion on solid waste. And then all in favor, say aye.
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 I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 16, FY 14, operating budget, transportation, in the amount of $907,599.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that is unanimous. Okay, that is the vast majority of the operating budget, short only the schools and libraries. How do folks feel about dealing with the CPA recommendations tonight? We do have the whole CPAC report. Again, this is something Ms. Stein has kept us very informed of throughout the CPA process. And more than that, I don't know when we're going to have another 20 minutes or half an hour to give them to come in and present this to us at our upcoming meetings. So do people feel comfortable with the CPA recommendations or how would you like to proceed?
Let me see what the warrant looks like on this so that it's clear. CPA here. That's Article 24. Just want to see how it sit up. It's Part A. I wasn't prepared to speak to this, so I'm trying to equate the motion sheets. I see this. Part B is $156,000. I know what that's for, but the numbers seem different or more spread out than the, over the Brunel property. And that's something I don't really know. I'd be happier, I think, if they presented this. It's, it's really not that complicated for them.
So, so I'm not sure we have the option of that. So it's more of a question, and I don't expect you to present the whole thing, but it's a question of, will the select board have questions that we can't answer such that our recommendation should be deferred? If, if we're satisfied with the recommendation from the Community Preservation Act Committee as is and/or we could, we could get our questions about any of this answered to our satisfaction, then we can deal with it tonight.
I mean, I, I can do it. I just would feel better not being in charge of something I'm only a liaison to, but I can do it.
We can pretend Mr. Poehler's in charge if it makes you feel better.
Want to be in charge, Sandy? You haven't even been to the meetings. Now.
I can pretend.
But Sonia reported.
So again, the.
All right, I, I will, I will do it. I will do it. I will make, I will move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 24, Commit, Community Preservation Act, Part A, in the amount of $282,395. And what you can see here on the warrant.
Second.
Mr. Hayden's second, and thank you.
Oh, sorry about that. Is that, that there's $15,000. This is money that they have in hand. Okay. So it's not money that they're borrowing for. All right, $15,000 is for this helping the people in Echo Village with rental deposits and that sort of thing if they have to move because in their Eagle Crest property apartment, that was not a requirement previously. Okay, then the historic preservation, you see $195,395. That includes the conservation of Emily's dress and storage equipment for the historical society. Amherst Media historic recordings being preserved. The Unitarian Church having their Tiffany window restored for $106,000. And the Jones Library roof repair, $14,000. And then open space from this is $10,000 for surveys and appraisals because we're actually borrowing money for open. borrowing money for open space. The recreation, uh, is 60,000, uh, for the Mill River, um, recreation area. There's a leak that needs fixing. They want a shade structure and, um, some lifeguard chairs because the old ones are splintered. CPAC administrative expenses, that's a standard $2,000 that, um, uh, we really need to pay for CPAC keeping us informed, et cetera. Okay. So that's the first part.
Thank you. That's much more detail than we expected you to go into. Um-
That's the easy part.
It's the easy part. Questions and comments about this, Ms. Brewer?
So the idea is that under the first item, the 15,000, that family outreach and Amherst Housing Authority would work together to administer that program.
Right. And they're actually hoping to use that 15,000 to leverage more because 15,000 is not going to take them very far.
Okay. So based on their other work, they might be able to combine that, like that 15 with their other sources. Okay.
Right.
And, uh, this is the same story of, um, more being requested than could be given for, for the whole of part A also, right? There are, there are unfunded requests that came into CPA. So after going through the whole process of weighing everything, these are the recommendations. And, uh, and CPA has a, has a very thorough and robust public process on all of these considerations. So, uh, plenty of information was available at those meetings and on the websites. Mr. Wald?
Yeah, I mean, again, the, the reason we can do it is in part because certain things fell out and the Anne Whalen can be bonded and things like that. Uh, but in fact, they actually have leveraged some money because there was, uh, funds, there were funds that were raised in the Love Notes Benefit Concert from the Amherst Club that, for example, go to these organizations and will help to pay some of those rent, uh, differentials also.
Great.
So that's, again, the process is working very nicely in this case.
All right. Further discussion. And all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That is unanimous. Um, Ms. Stein, you want to speak to the CPA stuff? So again, this isn't going to, you're not going to need to present this. CPA will be presenting it. You're just going to say, "The select board supported it."
No, really?
Yes. Um, okay. Then, I move to rec, I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 24 Community Preservation Act Part B in the amount of 156,000. And what's written out here in great length, I haven't had time to absorb. Um, it's basically to purchase outright the Brunel property, um, that, uh, we were at one time hoping for a grant. Um, but in order to get this property and secure it, we really need to buy it at this point. So this is going to be borrowing under CPA.
So this, again, this is on the, um, town's open space and recreation plans. It's long been identified as an area of interest for the town. Um, we already did vote to support to acquire it through the grant.
I think I'm wrong. I think this one we're going to pay for out of CPA, right? Okay. There, there is borrowing coming, but I jumped the gun there. This one is to pay for out of CPA. Sorry. We're rescinding the borrowing. I said it was complicated.
Okay. So, um, but again, so this, the, the acquisition of this property has been supported by us and by town meeting before. Um, it's just a different funding source. So, um, okay. Further discussion on the Brunel part, property part B. I'm not sure Mr. Hayden actually seconded this motion. Did you second this?
Did you second it?
I will have it now.
Thank you. And all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. That's unanimous.
All right. I'll speak to that. Um, then the third one. Okay. Let me just write this down so I know where I'm at. Okay. I believe that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 24 Community Preservation Act Part C in the amount of 125,000. I think this is borrowed. Thank you. Good. Um, I want to say-
Hold on. After you make the motion, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, I, I think the address is supposed to be 650 and not 650 to 652. Um, do you remember about that? There was some-
650 in the CPA report.
650, right. So the 652, I think, doesn't really belong there.
That's on the warrant.
I know. That's what I'm telling you.
It's less than the warrant.
Yeah. Okay.
It's not more than. It's less than.
For purposes of tonight, we're okay. We'll, we'll make sure that's correct for, when we do the motions.
Okay. Good. Um, and basically, as you recall, this is for the purchase of, um, the Rock Farm, um, South Amherst property. Um, and they've put together a package and 125,000 still needed to be borrowed.
Mr. Wald?
I maybe could elaborate a little bit. This is, uh, Rock Farm is a new name that people are not familiar with perhaps, but it was also the Nielsen property or Strawberry Fields. It was a subject of planned housing going back many more years. And I've been involved in town politics. And there was a long time among some residents of the area in attempt to buy that or preserve it. And so part of what's going on here because of the large size of the package is that, if I'm, Ms. Stein can correct me if I'm wrong, we, the Kestrel Trust is involved to try to help leverage funds. They're going to sell off two house lots to fund part of it. Uh, and then we have the 125,000 here. And so this package between the sale of the lots, the town money and private donations is supposed to bring the total up.
The Kestrel Trust is actually contributing $100,000 to maintain the scenic views from the rail trail.
Right. And what's interesting is that it turns out the state, DCR, uh, is in favor of this because they were worried about the possibility of degradation of the landscape if the area is more developed. And they think it's, I think if I recall correctly from the CPA meeting, they thought it was cheaper to pay $100,000 to buy this outright than to have to deal with the annual maintenance if, if the area becomes built up. So, so that was an interesting twist. And that, I think, also brought the conservation, uh, staff on, on board. It was, because they, this, this was not a long-term priority, unlike the Brunel property.
Right.
I would just add, and it'll also be, the article also, uh, creates a conservation restriction.
Restriction. Indeed it does. Ms. Brewer?
So just a couple of things that I'm not sure how I can string together effectively, but I'll try. Um, building on what Mr. Wald said. So although it says in the CPA report that it's a high priority for preservation, I don't think that's a fact associated with our open space and recreation plan. I think that might be someone's high priority. But I think it's an unfortunate choice of words for CPA to have said that because that's what I consider to be our priority is what's in our open space and recreation plan is a high priority. This was not particularly, but that doesn't mean that opportunities don't arise, that where perfect things come together and gel. But it, it's not that it's been high on our particular list. Um, I have expressed reservations before because of the argument that was made against the housing units there, some of which would have potentially been affordable, which has been disappointing to see the changeover. However, seeing that two house lots would be made available there means that's two more houses, although they certainly won't be affordable, um, that will be contributing to our tax base in their own way. So that's something. And I want to also just assure myself that the 125, that is, that is just the final piece of this puzzle, I believe you've indicated. And it's not that this is early stages and it might change. It's that this is our portion. It's this, this is it. This is 125. Okay.
Ms. Stein?
Um, I will say in defense of CPA saying this is a high priority item, the public came out in large numbers in support of acquiring this property. Um, they really felt between burnout pools and the, um, proximity to conservation areas, et cetera, et cetera, that this really was worth preserving, that the views, et cetera, would be marred by a 17-house development property. And so the turnout supporting it was surprisingly large.
Mr. Hayden?
I have a question about DCR. Um, is that the same group that wanted to mow down all the trees and widen that path by two feet and then build that down across?
That was their consultant's recommendation.
That very same DCR. Can you imagine?
No.
So I'm, I'm not personally going to support this article. I, I have a lot of issues with its history. Um, I don't know, I don't know where that brings me for its present. Um, I'm willing to let town meeting make a community-wide decision about whether or not this is its priority. Um, I'm going to abstain from the recommendation. If it comes to a tally vote, then I'll personally vote against it. But I won't, I won't vote against, I, I won't make a, an opposing vote for a select board recommendation because I'm happy for the community to decide its own priorities. Anyone else have any comments before we go? Everyone has a comment.
No, I have no comment.
Mr. Wald?
I mean, I was just wondering though, there is a motion on the, on the floor, whether it would make sense for us to take no position on the article?
Um-
To make no recommendations.
Right.
So I, since there is a motion on the floor, people can make their vote. I don't know. How would people like to proceed with that? We can do whatever we want. We can proceed with the motion as is. We could discuss whether or not we should, um, vote to make no recommendation. Um, so procedurally on that before we get to what other, anybody else's reaction to, to what I said or how they might vote. So procedurally, Ms. Stein?
Well, I just feel, having watched the whole process, the, the local support for it, um, the arguments that were made at the time, that I will vote to support this. So-
So you'd rather the select board take a recommendation?
I, I would rather.
Make a recommendation and you'll support it. Okay. Mr. Hayden?
I, I would, I'm going to suggest that we take no position. I don't, I'm not anxious to, um, be opposed to it, whatever personal feelings are and, um, which are grounded somewhat in the history, because I've been involved in that history. Um, but I, I, I like the idea of saying, look, town meeting, this is a decision that you want to take. That we, we're not going to take a, uh, we're required to take a position on this, one way or the other. And I think it'd be no way.
One way or the other, or not. Um, Mr. Wald and then Ms. Brewer?
So procedurally, if one wanted to achieve that outcome, one would have to defeat a motion in favor of the current?
You know, we're a small body. We could decide that the tide is going against the motion on the floor and we'll just have a new motion. Ms. Brewer?
Uh, um, I, pass.
Okay. Um, so I think taking no position is in line with the vote that I, the meaning behind the vote that I would be looking to take. So I'd be happy for select board to take no position. Um, I don't think that town meeting really needs us to take a position or not. I mean, this is clearly going to be, this is just going to be one of those things they're, they're going to vote for. Um, so, so to defer to no position, I think would be a fine thing for us to do. So, um, I am inclined to side with the gentleman on the board and, uh, and going with, um, essentially vacating our earlier motion and going with a no, not taking a recommendation motion instead. Ms. Brewer?
If I may have my turn back again, which you so kindly just gave me back. Um, I, I'm trying to think of, you know, what's the select board's role in this. So to step back from it because I think a bunch of us have been involved somewhat in the history of this process and may have our various reasons for our concerns. Um, and so the select board's role on CPAC, but I mean, we, we make recommendations to town meeting on everything because, you know, we're supposed to be able to see the big picture. And I think we have some concerns with the big picture at the same time as we have support for the CPAC process and how the process actually works. So I think it actually makes more sense for us to take no position than to have some sort of divided vote or, uh, you know, a, a no vote. I'm not even sure I'd like it to be a no vote at this point. I'd like it to be a, select board is not really completely all together on what we see as this item fitting into the big picture of the town. So, whereas the other things seem quite simple.
Okay. So since there really is no way to defeat the original motion, it doesn't really get defeated. It's, it's, um, it's a motion to recommend or not. So you could have one person recommending and I suppose you could have four people abstaining, which would be the only way to, to defeat it. Um, do you mind, um, essentially withdrawing your motion and just moving on to a new motion?
No, I think I'd rather I had one vote for and four abstentions.
Okay. We could do that. So that will still register. And then we can, then we can make a new motion to not recommend.
Or, or whatever anybody decides.
And that would be basically the-
But I, I would sort of feel, having sat through all of the meetings on this and felt the urgency and the, the feelings of the people who really supported this, um, and watched, you know, the process over the years too. I'm not sure that, uh, I would have wanted a different outcome than the outcome that we're going to get. So I would still support it.
Okay. So Ms. Stein would like to go on record supporting this. And she did make the motion. So I would recommend that we proceed with her motion, um, that, that the best vote for, to build up for the next motion that will come will be, um, will be abstentions by anyone who wants to not take a position. We'll then have another motion. So then we'll say basically the select board had, had two votes on this. One was, one in favor of recommending and four abstentions and one that was presumably four, um, votes in favor of no recommendation. And I think that town meeting can deal with that. Ms. Brewer?
I, I'm going to show my full level of ignorance at this point, since we don't do exactly Robert's rules. But if one, there, there's one vote for it and zero votes against it, doesn't it pass? You don't have to have a quorum to, to have a vote pass.
Right. Well, that's why I'm saying it's-
So I'm saying, I'm not saying, I'm not, well, I'm, I believe that if we voted 1-0-4, it would pass as a recommendation to town meeting.
Against rather than taking no position.
Exactly.
Okay. That's putting a finer point on it. So this is, this is why I was saying, if you want to withdraw the motion. So we're actually going to end up with a motion to not recommend this based on proceeding with your motion. It's going to be one in favor and four opposed.
And what's the alternate?
The alternate is to withdraw that motion, to have a motion to not recommend or to take no position, which could then be four in favor of taking no position and one opposed because it was a supporting motion. I, I think, I think you would rather go into this. I understand that you want to go on, on record supporting this, but what will happen is your support vote will be overwhelmed by our objection vote. And I don't think we want the select board-
I withdraw my original motion, um, and will vote against yours.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. That's fine. So just, just so you understand where, um-
Yeah, I do.
We, we absolutely could go the way with your original motion, but then it will look like a stronger opposition vote from the select board than any of us want to give. We don't want to all vote against it. We want to take no recommendation.
So someone else made the motion.
Yeah. So Mr. Wald?
I move that the select board, do you have to read off the motion sheet or just to?
Just ad lib.
You can ad lib.
I move that the select board take no position on this article.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
That would be you.
Abstaining, zero. So that's-
Oh, I was looking ahead to the next one.
Four in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions for taking no position on this section of the article. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Now we come to the last part, part D.
Uh, we still have C. Oh, no, I'm so sorry. Of course we don't. Of course we don't.
Okay.
I was looking at the wrong line.
I move that the select board recommend to the May 6, 2013 annual town meeting, Article 24 Community Preservation Act Part D in the amount of 110,000.
Second.
Uh, for, thank you.
Right.
Further discussion. So this is the borrowing article. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you.
The pieces are in that. I couldn't wait for it.
This is the Anne Whalen apartments kitchen and, um, re, kitchen repairs and electric, um, I don't know the appropriate.
It's on page three of the CPA report.
Okay. There you go. That's what it is. Um, and I, uh, would like to-
Ms. Stein, yeah?
Eek to it or against it. Or, I'm not going to vote for this. I'm going to abstain. And I should report that CPA, CPAC was divided on this. There were two people who voted against it. And it concerns, it concerns the verbiage in the CPA, CPA Act, the Community Preservation Act. Um, and I don't want to go into it now. Um, I think we have had two letters from the lawyers and I think the second one is not convincing to me and I'd like to research it further. So at this point, I am not going to vote for it and I'm not going to vote against it. And just so you know why.
So, so bottom line, this boils down to, um, some CPA members think that this is not legitimate, a legitimate use of CPA funds. Um, town council has been consulted and the CPA has been an evolving act, um, through the years. And in fact, they just broadened it. Um, was that a year or two ago? Time flies. Um, so all the advice from town council is that this is, um, this is well in the, in the realm of what is allowable under the act. So I understand you still doubt that. But our advice from town council is that it is sound. Um, so I'll- So that's just a little bit more elaboration. So Ms. Brewer, and then Ms. Stein.
I am familiar with this article only from, from the exposure to it associated with housing issues. And this is, of course, only half the money. The other half of the money is supposed to be coming from the block grant. And so that just goes to show you that it's a large need, and we don't have any place else to put it at this point, which tends to make me err on the, go ahead and trust town council, even though we've had some differences of opinion in the past. And obviously CPA, as you say, is an evolving thing. It's hard for me to understand how we could be so opposed to what town council's interpretation of this is. I would like, at some point, if we could get a copy of CPA, of council's indication on this, that, obviously Ms. Stein still has concerns about, just so that I could see if I shared them. But, you know, normally there are assurance that yes, based on our understanding of the evolving nature of CPA, this would be an allowable expense. It's hard for me to imagine they'd want to put us on the hook for something that they didn't really feel comfortable with, so.
Okay, Ms. Stein.
There are, you have to take the whole package, and I haven't had time to study it, but there was a letter, number one, from our lawyer. Then some letters that had been put out by CPA got sent to our lawyer, and then there was a second letter from our lawyer. And that's the letter that I'm just not totally comfortable with at that, at this moment. Now, I admit I haven't had, I didn't expect to present this tonight, so I caught a little bit off guard, or I would have studied that letter a little bit more and talked to some people about it. But it's just not as crisp, shall we say, as I would like it to be.
Thank you. Mr. Wald.
I have just partly a question and a comment. I think Ms. Stein can correct me if I'm wrong. If I'm not mistaken, this was something that was taken off the table because of questions about its viability. And I seem to recall it had to do with the, a little bit like the soccer fields, the question as to whether the housing was created with CPA money, right?
Whether what?
Whether the housing was created with CPA money.
That is correct. That is correct.
You know, that said, I'm not a lawyer. We pay someone who is, so he answers these questions. And I think I'm perfectly happy, happy to defer to town council on this one.
Right.
Yeah, I've reviewed this, and I know the CPA committee voted, I think it was six to two, to recommend this to town meeting. I have reviewed the opinion from town council about whether or not this type of expenditure is, meets the eligibility criteria for an affordable housing expenditure. And I'm comfortable with the opinion that it does. And I think the CPA legislation was filled with all kinds of common sense language about, you know, this allows us, makes clear that an expenditure to fix 40-year-old kitchens in an affordable housing development are an appropriate use of preservation funds, so that we can make these remaining units, those people live in dignity with the renovations that are made. Made, so I was comfortable with the opinion. I hope we can get this done.
It's a complicated case, because the act says no rehabilitation if you did not build the housing with CPA money. Okay? So it's a question of, if the buildings are in such bad repair that they wouldn't be usable, which you could only, almost make that argument about the electrical work, then maybe that would be in a different category. But I don't know that, how the Community Preservation Act people would feel about it, or if they would feel we're over the line, one way or the other. I just don't know, and I, that's why I'm going to abstain at this point.
Okay. Mr. Wald.
Yeah, well, on that point, and to pick up on what Mr. Muzanti and Ms. Brewer said, but maybe first, CPA people being Community Preservation Alliance?
Pardon me?
There are no CPA people, really. There's the state and what the law says. There's the Community Preservation Alliance, which is an informal organization, has no binding authority, but has a record of trying to interpret the law and give advice. So, you know, it's not as if there's a CPA office you can talk to in Boston that's going to answer your questions. As you said, it's evolving law. The other thing is, I think what, what Mr. Muzanti said about dignity is important, and what Ms. Brewer said about housing in general. We've done a very poor job in some ways of taking care of affordable housing for our population. And, you know, safety, this talks about ground fault interrupter. You know what those are? That's so you don't get electrocuted when you have outlets next to, next to sinks. I mean, the combination of dignity and safety, and the fact that we are periodically threatened with a shortage of affordable housing. We've heard Mr. Weiss come and talk about that, about the 10% rule and so forth. So, you know, if there's something I want to take a chance on, I think it would be affordable housing.
And to elaborate a little bit more on Mr. Wald's point, not to speak for him, but this isn't like if we, if we pass a bylaw that is not legitimate and the Attorney General's Office turns us down. There is nobody to turn us down. We would pass this, and then it would go to court.
You'd have to be sued, right?
Right. That's how, that's how it gets challenged. That's what happened with the, the situation in Newton, was it Newton, the playgrounds there? So if, so council, and obviously anybody can sue anyone for anything at any time, that's just a given. Council's interpretation is that this is fully defensible in court if we were to be sued. So that's kind of, that's kind of the bottom line of what we're talking about here. Okay. Further discussion on this item. All right, then. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
An abstaining. So that's, Ms. Brewer, did you vote?
I voted yes.
You voted yes, so that's four in favor, zero opposed, one abstention. Okay, and I, I do think it would be helpful if we could, to Ms. Brewer's point, get further clarification from town council about why exactly he's comfortable with this. All right.
There are two letters from town council at this point.
Yeah, we'll forward those to you.
Great.
Ms. Stein, just going to talk to all those?
So I don't think we need, how, how will we do this? So we've, this is one article.
Because they'll, they'll do them, and I'll just report, so.
Okay, so how do you feel about Part C? Would you rather speak to Part C, or would you rather have someone else speak to Part C? This is.
It, it doesn't matter. I mean, how do you guys feel? Who would like to talk to it?
So I, you know, I'm perfectly comfortable with you speaking to it, just like Mr. Hayden speaking to one that he opposed. But so, so you'll.
I can report.
Right, so you're representing the select board's perspective, which I think you understand. We simply didn't want to oppose it, and yet you can speak to your.
So four took no position, and then it was me.
Right.
Okay.
And so that lets you, that lets you capture everything. Okay, good. If you're comfortable with that, then that sounds good. All right.
We start waving our hands wildly.
All right, so we covered all of the articles that we had on our list tonight. Hooray, hooray. That's amazing. Too bad the CPA folks missed all our fun. And did, have I missed anything? Is there a Part E here that we missed?
No, I think we.
CPA? The agenda says A through E, but maybe that was just my mistake?
I think we've done everything.
It's only A through D, is that correct?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay.
Double check.
I wonder why I put E through D. A through D, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, well, you think that was fun. Wait till next week. Okay, FY14 budget discussion. So this is really mostly a status update and any other questions or comments, folks, and status update, I'm sorry, I meant to say status update, on state budget situation and any questions or comments folks have that they didn't get asked when we talked about all the different divisions of the operating budget. Mr. Poehler, thank you very much for coming in. Mr. Muzanti.
Yes, and I'm looking for my notes. Okay.
Story of my life.
Yeah, so, you know, you've, you've taken action on the entire town budget proposals, with the exception of schools and library operating, which you'll do next week. So that, that is, you know, great, great progress. There's two items about how the state budget deliberations impact us that I want to update you on briefly. The House Ways and Means Committee in Boston has released their recommended FY14 state budget. The full House is expected to debate and vote on that budget next week, the week of the 22nd. So we should have a House budget enacted by the end of April. The Senate Ways and Means Committee will come out sometime around May 15th, I believe. Again, with the objective of the full Senate acting on their version of the state budget. By the end of May, they'll spend a portion of June reconciling the two, and vote a final budget to recommend to the governor, who then have 10 days to approve or line item veto. And then the legislature with a two-thirds vote, and both branches can choose whether or not to override some or all of those vetoes, to the extent the governor does that. So magically, on or near midnight on June 30th, we'll have a adopted state budget. But on the House side, the budget is, in terms of revenue sharing to cities and towns, there's a little bit more money coming back to communities. There is, in the unrestricted general government aid accounts, there is, I believe it's a $21 million line item was recommended for funding. The governor had recommended $31 million. That would distribute to Amherst using the existing funding formula, about $168,000 more than the governor had recommended, and more than we assumed in our budget. There are a handful of other areas on both the revenue side and on our state assessments that are different, in those, in those cases, lower. Lower on a couple of the revenue accounts by small amounts, and then the assessments are roughly $68,000 higher net from the governor's proposal that we had factored into the budget. So the net effect of all that, if the House budget was to become the final budget in July, would be about $93,000 to the good in terms of net revenue. We have a gap of about $60,000, or 68, no, 68, 69,000, hand signals, to have a truly balanced budget. So the first 68 or 69,000 of that would, would essentially cover that with no, no action necessary. And the consensus recommendation back out to the boards and committees from the Budget Coordinating Group at their March, I think it was March 28th meeting, and you had the summary points, I believe, in last week's meeting packet. Basically said if, if at the end of the day, our state revenue sharing is higher, then we assume that we should first retire whatever small gap we have, which is what I just described, and then we, we should resist the urge to expend or appropriate any additional dollars from that. And that, you know, that'll just help us out in terms of, you know, remaining conservative and prudent on our revenue estimating, and might even help us a little bit on our reserve growth at the end of the next fiscal year. Yeah, so that's, that's where we are in the House, and they'll be voting next week, and we'll have a House budget.
And you want to talk about the new developments in transportation?
Yeah, the transportation bill, there is very active debate and action going on in Boston. The House had recommended, approved a $500 million package per year in new, new revenues, that by 2018 would be up to $500 million. That had additional monies for a variety of transportation needs, but the ones affected cities and, cities and towns are regional transit authorities would receive substantially more monies. They would be forward funded, so that you wouldn't, PVTA and others wouldn't have to borrow their entire operating subsidy from the state and then have the state pay us back the following year. You know, borrowing to pay the operating budget, kind of crazy. So that, that requires an infusion of money to make the leap year, which next year would be. So that's a good thing, and then there would be additional monies built into the base aid from the state to allow preservation of existing service. The need to push off for some indefinite period, the need for fare hikes or service reductions, and then may, in fact, result in targeted service improvements. And the PVTA would intend to complete an exhaustive system-wide root analysis by early next calendar year. And, you know, we'll be very engaged on the Amherst side, and I'll let you know when there might be opportunities for Amherst input on service levels for that. So the both, so that's in the House bill. The Senate bill is similar to that, but a larger amount for local road money. Their package, looking at, also looking at cigarette taxes and a three cent increase on the gas tax, which is then index to inflation, would generate by 2018 a net increase of about $800 million a year. So that would also be very positive news for the regional transit. Both the House and the Senate proposals would, according to the House and Senate Ways and Means Chairs, say that our local Chapter 90 road grants would see a 50% annual increase. You know, the amount allocated each year would be 50% higher than the current number. That would allow Chapter 90 funds coming back to the town of Amherst to go from roughly $800,000 in the coming year to a little over 1.2 million. And that would be each year over the next five years. That's a huge step forward and allows us to address, you know, several million dollars more of road, road repair needs in the town of Amherst over the next five years. And so we're very encouraged by that. The House and Senate, because their versions of the bill are, are different in some cases, although the revenue sources are, the big ones are the same. They'll be reconciling those differences and then voting a final bill, and we are encouraging our legislators to support the higher amount in roughly along the lines of the Senate, Senate version, so we can get on with the work as soon as possible. So that's a big deal. That's a long time coming, and will make a big difference.
So as you noted, all this still remains in flux. The governor had originally been threatening to veto kind of basically anything that wasn't his proposal, but there's been a lot of movement on that practically.
Yeah, and he's, he has, the governor has signaled much more openness on the Senate, you know, the path that the Senate has gone on. And we heard at Senator Rosenberg's municipal conference in Northampton a week ago Saturday, from the Senate Transportation Chair, Senator McGee, you know, even though there's a lot of passion, particularly in our area, about, you know, the positives related to a more progressive state income tax structure. It's really about the art of getting any bill through the legislature, and there just wasn't sufficient majority support on the income tax piece. So they're, they've come up with some alternative ways to fund a very significant investment in transportation that gets about 80% of the governor's number. And so I think we're on the cusp of a deal here that I hope we can actually implement, because I'm very much on the implementation side of this, and want to put the monies to work to fix up a bunch of our streets that badly need it.
Thank you. And so before I go to comments, the Senate bill, Senate recommendation also includes education funding, which had sort of fallen out of the House bill.
Yeah, much less prominently reported, but there are education dollars that the House and the Senate, for that matter, there's higher ed money, which would be of help to the UMass system, and help hold the line, at least in the near term, on additional tuition and fee hikes. The, there's also, we're curious to see what the Senate does in their budget. They might allocate some of those funds for higher ed and also K-12 education and pre-K.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Muzanti? All right, so basically, stay tuned is the, is the bottom line with state stuff, because it's always changing, but, but it's basically all. always changing, but it's basically all moving towards the good lately, so that's a plus. Okay, Town Manager's Report.
Town Manager's Report, okay. Okay, first, another milestone, we have our Town Hall Emergency Generator that was funded through the capital budget process is installed, has been commissioned, and is operable. And you wouldn't know by walking by there when it's operating, because you can't hear it. And became operational on April tenth, and I want to just commend the team of staff who worked on that. Ron Bahanowicz took the lead on that as our Facilities Director with the support of the Capital, Joint Capital Planning Committee and Town Meeting. But our electricians at the DPW, Fred Hartwell and Mike Moore, this and other projects, did a great job, because it was a very complicated electrical job to make the appropriate testing and connections into the Town Hall system. And it's a natural gas generator, so it's quiet, there's no odor, and puts us in very good position if and when we have our next extended power outage in terms of operating our communication system, our computer servers, and those kinds of things. So that was, that's a good thing.
Questions or comments about the generator? All right.
Next, staff recognitions, you know, we talked about the marathon and the tragic, tragic incident at the end of the marathon, but Amy Rusicki was here earlier at DPW. She ran in the marathon, very competitive time, so competitive that she was far away from the finish line by the time of that incident, but she's doing great work for us, I just wanted to recognize her, and that's another aspect of her life outside of work that is great. The recent and upcoming activities, Civil War tablets. Here we are on the sesquicentennial year, anniversary of the Civil War. We are working very hard, again through Ron Bahanowicz, to do the necessary reissue of a request for proposals to allow the engineering and other work for the installation of the Civil War tablets that have been restored with CPA monies to be installed in this room on the opposite wall. We are putting the finishing touches on a grant application to the state. There's a small grant program that would be used to fund up to five thousand dollars, and our grant application will be to create and install interpretive materials that would accompany the tablets, so it would tell the Amherst story. And we think, in addition to being in the room here and perhaps in the foyer out here, but probably kind of the, a path from the main entrance of Town Hall up the steps and tell a little story along the way with the interpretive signs, and be another very nice complimentary piece that brings the tablets to life and tells the, you know, the story of the Amherst citizens who were active and who are represented on those tablets.
Nice. Do you have any sense of what the timing would be for the RFP, about what the goal would be for installation?
The goal is to have those installed this calendar year.
That's great.
Yep. So the grant app will be submitted any day now, literally, and we'll know quite soon. And Stan Rosenberg is co-chair of this legislature's Civil War Sesquicentennial Commission, and alerted us to this grant opportunity, so we want to take full advantage of that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about Civil War stuff? Mr. Hayden?
Would you say sesquicentennial a third time?
Sesquicentennial a third time.
There you go.
And that's all I have.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Mr. Mousanti? Oh, sorry. Anything we should know from the weekend? How did things go, the joint patrols with UMass, how the ambulance situation is going?
Overall, a pretty good weekend. It was our second really full weekend with those additional resources that have been contributed by UMass, monies for two additional ambulance crews, paramedic-level ambulances through, detail ambulances. That allowed us to have a total of six ambulances out on the street available to respond. So I don't know if we had any particular moments in time where all six were in service, but we were adequately covered over Thursday, Friday, Saturday night period. We also had concert events at the Mullins Center, both Friday night, no, Saturday night and Sunday night, again in cooperation with Mullins Center management and UMass. There were additional ambulance personnel paid for by the Mullins Center on duty, and they were put to good use, meeting the needs of, medical needs of concert goers. That, again, has a domino effect on our ability of our, on the street ambulances to be able to respond most quickly all over, all over the community. The joint patrols with the University Police and Amherst Police also were in play, again, this past weekend, particularly in the Fearing Phillips Street neighborhoods. There were, I'm trying to remember the count, there were, I believe, a total of about twenty-one arrests or summons, mostly related to alcohol-related calls for service. And again, we thought that overall went pretty well, and we're actively planning for this coming weekend with all of those resources and the state police.
Thank you. Questions or comments about that? I'll just note, I did the walk this way thing overnight Saturday, and in doing that, I saw lots of UMass police, both in their own cruisers as well as riding jointly in the cruisers with the Amherst police, and I was just so grateful to see that. And I think it sends a really strong message about the town and the university working together on this issue, taking it very seriously, and really being a team to address it. And certainly, the more cops you have on the streets, the bigger deterrent impact that that has, and I think that there's no question that the presence was strong, visual presence was strong, and that that hopefully contributed to the weekend being successful, and we just hope that continues. So just want to make sure that we really appreciate UMass taking part this way. This is a change, it's a change for the better, it's a change that we want to encourage. So to encourage it, we must also appreciate it. All right, you're all set?
Yeah, the number on the police summons and arrests was actually twelve.
Twelve. It's like twenty-one, it's just backwards.
Yeah. Looking at my notes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Very good. Then moving along to member reports, liaison and representative reports since we last met. Ms. Stein?
April ninth, the ACOM met, they had a quorum despite having two resignations. They got caught up on minutes, they discussed the summer farmer's market and bringing it to its full potential for Amherst farmers. Possible consultant might be hired for what the farmer, what the market should be like. Then they discussed a number of ideas from the forum they had, what's growing on. These were ideas that would help the farmers move their products and possibly have the establishment of an Amherst farm. On Thursday, April eleventh, from three to five, I went to an exhibit that was very interesting. Seniors and Amherst College students collaborated and researched Amherst College previous students right up through the modern day, and they made a book showing the history of these Amherst people. And it's, and then the exhibit was full-size, oh, maybe four-foot-high by three-foot-wide poster board pages from the book, and it was very interesting. Many, of course, of the early Amherst students were, went on to become missionaries, and so they reported on their lives from disparate parts of the world. And I suggested, they were not selling the books, they were strictly for the seniors who had participated and students who had participated in this collaborative project. But I suggested they put one in the Jones Library, because it's really amazing work that they put together right through the modern era where somebody comes out as gay, and so it dealt with a whole range of issues, from missionaries to, so that was, that was interesting. And then, one, two, three, four of us were at the Pi Capify Dinner that night, and this is, I shouldn't talk too much, but basically, this is a very interesting fraternity that really is participating in a number of good things, but their main emphasis is on helping disabled people. So they build one wheelchair ramp per year for various buildings that need them, where there are wheelchair-bound people. And that was a very interesting meeting, this, or dinner. They were very gracious, and they also participated in the cleanup, and will continue to do so every week, helping, helping the town in that way. Friday, I went, I represented the town, I hope that's okay, at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Atkinson Family Practice, that building that was built on, sorry, Research Drive, and that was a very interesting, very festive occasion. And then I had promised last week that I would try to explain about the Audit Committee report. The financial statement, page seventeen, seems to show that there's a one-point-eight-five million-dollar excess of revenue, but that really doesn't take into account expenditures that have to come out of free cash, for the snow and ice deficits that were excessive for the grant match for War Memorial Pool, and that's just the way the audit people do the accounting. That figure simply indicates that that amount is, can be used to cover those deficits. It really is not cash sitting around. In fact, in July one, two thousand and eleven, our reserves totaled four million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, twenty-eight dollars. In two thousand and twelve, it was four million, three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and one dollars. So our free cash only grew by a hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-three dollars, according to Mr. Poole. So that's the best I can explain the audit report. They simply account, do accounting to a different set of rules.
Thank you. Thank you for going back into that, as you said you would, that's much appreciated. Questions or comments for Ms. Stein? I'll just note a couple of other things about the fraternity dinner. Oh, just to clarify, the cleanup is every other week for the rest of the semester, not every week, that's perfectly fine. And I just wanted to note that I sent around the PowerPoint presentation that they gave to us that night, I sent it to the Select Board so that we would all have it and be able to pass it along potentially to the resource, and one of the folks I passed it on to, I should have copied Ms. Brewer on this, it was the Chair of the Disability Access Advisory Committee.
I wrote to him about.
So I had spoken with one of the members there, and they had had some contact with Nate Malloy, who's the staff person, but really not contact with the committee. So now we're kind of closing the loop on that relationship. It seems like a really good, a really good relationship to develop there. I mean, the great alignment of interests and advocacy with big, strong labor, as the, as the gentleman of the fraternity indicated to us, these are the same folks who went during the snowstorm Nemo and dug out the Chestnut Court. So really, it was, it was a great evening, it was great to make their acquaintance, it was great to have conversations over dinner with them about kind of the issues of the day, really great to get their perspective on things, and I really commend them for their outreach to the town, to invite us to come there for that. So that is all. Okay, other folks liaison reports? Ms. Brewer?
Absolutely. It was, it was a great dinner. They, it was really great being in a purposefully-built building, it was built as sorority, but it's now a fraternity, and aside from that issue, it, you know, it's not just cramming a bunch of people into a little tiny house. It actually makes sense in terms of the layout and stuff, and so that's nice to see. And they were just all very charming and very helpful in terms of us trying to understand some of their perspectives on things, and they, I heard over and over again from the members that they were all people who, before they came to college, thought, I'm not going to join a fraternity, not a fraternity, that's a frat, but instead they joined a fraternity. So they, they make a big difference between what those two things are. And I should also mention, it is funny with the DAAC situation, because they talked, they mentioned to us this film that they're bringing, Pi Capify is bringing to town, and they wanted to talk to DAAC about promoting it, because it's a film about people in wheelchairs using cameras. And it turns out that because a couple of the DAAC members are already heavily involved or employed by Stavros, Stavros is the group that they work with to build the wheelchair ramps, so I mean, the circles are connected, but just not quite in the way that they could have been, and so strengthening that connection, so, you know, some of the people on DAAC knew all about them and some of them didn't, and so it is really fun to be able to keep making those connections all the way around. So thank you for that, because I was going to do that, but I knew that Nate was working on it as well, so, thank you. In terms of other reports, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Group met last week, and I went to the tail end of their meeting, because it was right after the dinner, and, or had started before the dinner, really. And they had reports from the various agencies that they funded, and they have put out the reports as to, you know, what's happening so far with the money that went to those particular agencies, so it was a nice chance for report back, people to understand what's going on. Of course, the big question of the day is, what's going to happen in the future? And so I know they're planning to talk to the Town Manager about what his vision is for future, is it that we would assume that we're not coming back to, you know, being a point off on many entitlement, which the theory may be at this point that the state maybe doesn't want to do many entitlement communities anymore? And if we're going to go for a competitive grant, there was certainly some support on the Block Grant Advisory Committee members' part to say, if it's going to take us longer to be competitive, so to speak, for a competitive grant, that we might have to skip a year in application, that that would be something that, you know, they would understand that perspective and that they looked forward to talking to Town Manager. After we got through Town Meeting and we found out what the state said this June, since we won't have any idea until June for sure what's going to happen, just, it's just too unclear what's happening at the state level, but then what their role might be. You know, we had obviously discussion last time, as I looked toward the table, for the petitioner who was here talking about, well, when we have a social service agency item again, which we may or may not ever have again, so just, you know, what more might they function, and so they're just trying to get their arms around what that might look like. And they also have a little bit of money that they may need to reprogram from previous, from previous capital expenditures, which is always kind of a good problem to have, except that it has to be spent quickly, and so they might, you might see a little bit of information about that out there. And I don't think anything else has happened since last week, because it's just been so exciting.
We've just met.
Although, when we were talking about announcements, so that I don't lose sight of it, there's a thing we were all invited to next week as well, associated with, this wasn't a particular fraternity, this is, seems sort of like our coffee hour, but it's their version of our coffee hour over at UMass next week.
Yeah, so there's a student achievement reception and then student achievement awards. I would really like to be able to go to it, it's the same time, the awards part is the same time as the warrant review, so I've got to see what the deal is with whether I need to present any articles at the warrant review or not. So I got to figure that out. Ms. Stein?
Did that invitation come by email?
Yes. And it came to all of us by email, but yeah.
We actually got multiples of it.
Some of us are so far behind in email, by the time I find it, it'll be missed.
We've got, we've got a few days still for the RSVP.
Right, but what my point was going to be is that, beyond the fact, isn't But I, what, what my point was going to be is that beyond the fact isn't it exciting more and more things we get to go to in the spring? I appreciate they invited us. Also, if there is, if you won't be there to represent us, we always look to you for all the UMass things, to let us know, so that somebody shows up for this thing, because it's on an odd night, a Tuesday night?
I think it's Tuesday night, yeah.
So.
Yeah, the 23rd, I think it is, yeah.
So.
Yeah, so I'll definitely go to the reception. I hope to get to go to some or all of the awards, and I'm not sure. But it really is, it's a good community opportunity to be able to see, like, really the best side of students. I mean, these are their, these are their achievement awards, you know? And so, again, it gives us new messages to carry to the community about really what students are like in Amherst, in the majority. Okay, other liaison reports? Mr. Hayden?
Just very quickly, I'm interviewing five students for two intern, internships for the summer, one to help rewrite the Shade Tree Bi-Law and the other to do translation for Amherst Media, for their, they have a news program involving town politics, which would be valuable in the language that's presented.
That's great. Thank you. Other liaison reports? Mr. Walt?
Briefly, to underscore what everyone said about the nice evening with the fraternity, and the, and the point that these people said they never thought of joining one, it's not a social fraternity, it's not, it's not a drinking club, it's an academic fraternity, engineering in particular, though not all the members are engineers. So we should underscore that, you know, there are these professional organizations. And they really stress academic achievement, too. They require people to keep a certain grade point average. They provide assistance for those who need structured study time and so forth. So it's really quite rewarding to be there, and I second everything you said. Just two very brief things. The Public Arts is this Kickstarter campaign going on to acquire the Portal Sculpture in Kendrick Park. And I gather there's some issues about how to facilitate or even just arrange at all the transfer of money from that to town coffers, but that effort is underway, and I think they really would like people to contribute. And Historical Commission met on April 9th, when Ms. Brewer and I were at ACTV, so I was unable to go. But the upshot of that that's most relevant here is that the commission voted unanimously to make a formal request to Select Board to set up a committee to study the possibility of a local historic district in the Sunset Pleasant Street area. This is something, again, an expression of neighborhood, neighborhood concern about deteriorating quality of the area, demolitions and things like that. So that'll be coming our way at some point. But the, the decision was basically made in November, but they wanted to wait until other things were in place, like the Dickinson District Committee underway and the North Amherst Study Committee appointed. So that'll be coming to us at some point. What, and when the action will be, of course, is another matter, but just so we have that on the radar screen.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Walt? Ms. Brewer?
And you probably don't want to tell them what I'll say now, which is like, yeah, wait in line, because we haven't even started appointing the Dickinson group, I mean, the not Dickinson group, the North Amherst group. We talked about maybe the next time having Dickinson do it. Yeah, it, it's all important, I'm just not sure how it's all going to get done.
Well, that's also why we may, there may be ways to accomplish some of the same goals more quickly. I don't know, as a substitute or as a preliminary step, there might be other measures we could put in place that would achieve some protections. But yes, that is an issue of staff time and then just sort of sequencing how long this all takes. So I think Town Staff, which has to carry this out, is very aware of that.
Okay. Other liaison reports? I'll note, Campus Community Coalition, so I already said that I did the Walk This Way thing Saturday night. Great group of volunteers, students, administrators from the university. I'll be doing it again next Saturday. I'm not sure how effective it is, I got to say. It, I don't think we were terribly effective in rerouting students at all, but I do think it was effective in kind of spreading awareness about, you know, remember when you're in the neighborhoods, especially when you're coming home tonight. A, try and avoid the neighborhoods, but B, if you're in the neighborhoods, try and keep quiet, you know, quiet down, there are families here, et cetera. And I don't know, just kind of having an adult presence out there then kind of felt good. And the, the students, a lot of them thanked us. They thought we were a community watch, and they thought we were kind of looking out for their safety and stuff. So it was interesting. We, we had a whole range of reactions, but it, it was interesting. So they're doing a kind of formal feedback on how this is working, or not formal, informal feedback on, on how we think this is working. The final weekend of it is next week, Saturday. I'll be doing it again, anyone who wants to join us. A lot of fun. Get a bright green T-shirt. So there's that. Not exactly Campus and Community Coalition related, but just part of the UMass stuff is, last night, I was a judge at a Greek Week event. There's, there's a very massive event that happens in Mullen Center. It's the first time in Mullen Center, it's been in different places in the past. That is, they do a lip sync contest. They call it lip sync, it's actually much bigger than that. It's like a giant choreographed dance routine and lip sync that there were, I think there were, were there like seven teams? Yeah, there were seven teams that must have had 30 to 50 kids each in the teams and fraternities and sororities together in each group. And so it was both that, that big choreographed lip sync dance routine that was just impressive beyond all get out, and also what they called a Greek God and Goddess competition afterwards that was answering questions and talent. And that was, it was a lot of fun to participate in. So I was a judge along with a, a, an administrator from UMass, someone who works in Student, Student, University Programming Council, I think that's what they work with, and Sam the Minuteman. So the three of us were judges, so that was a lot of fun. And the green team won.
Whoever they were.
So yes, they were great. So there's that. I think those are all the things. Walk this way, if I can read my writing. Yeah. So I think that's all. We meet again in six days. That is the 22nd of April, so I have no Chair's Report either. This is just all kind of one and the same. We did all the untimed items. We already talked about the coffee hour, so the public is invited and again reminded about the coffee hour for Harrison and Greg on April 29th at 5:00 PM in this room. I think that's all. Anything else we need to talk about before next Monday? Mr. Hayden, we're so glad you're back. And without objection, this meeting is adjourned at exactly 9:30 PM. Thank you very much.